Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a rule call?
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Tally. Commissioner Wu.
Yeah.
Chair Pro Tim Blackwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Brule.
Here.
Chair Crandall.
Here. The next item is Special Orders of Business, and we have none. We have two sets of minutes to approve. We have minutes from the regular study session meeting of December 5th, 2018. Do we have any changes or a motion?
I have a requested change. We didn't, I didn't see in the minutes where a comment I made about adding adjacent residential streets in future parking studies. So I'd appreciate an additional bullet point reading that suggested staff add adjacent residential streets in North Beach that provide free visitor parking to future parking studies. This is the study session, and I have the text for you here. Yeah, just, just add one additional bullet point.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to per the minutes as amended by Chair, or Vice Chair Brule.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Brown, seconded by Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have one abstention, so that would be five, four, zero, one abstention, or two abstentions.
No, one abstention.
With Tally being gone. The next item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the City of San Clemente, December 5th, 2018, regular meeting. Do we have a motion or changes?
I have a suggested change on that one, too.
Alright.
On page three, the second to the last bullet, there's a phrase in there, the third sentence, it says, "for more elegant appearance in exchange for." I thought that should be rephrased to, "to make the findings for," because we had discussed it as something to make the findings for, not as kind of a deal. So, in other words, that would read, "Suggested the Chick-fil-A signage facing Vista Hermosa could be changed from its current corporate red color to bronze for a more elegant appearance to make the findings for allowing the additional signage square feet requested by the applicant."
But in the discussion, if I may, in the discussion, we actually touched on both signs, which was the intent of our discussion as a party, as a group. Do I get support on that from the other commissioners? We did, we did have a discussion, which, that was part of it, but we also, you know, the flavor, if you will, of the discussion was for both signs.
So you wanted to add, you wanted to remove, like, facing Vista Hermosa, that phrase in there as well?
It was, it was just building mounted signage. It was both.
But we only proved one of the two, though.
That's how we, that's how we voted on it, though.
Well, this is a discussion.
This is the discussion.
Okay.
During the discussion, we did talk about changing both, both copies into the bronze color.
And the applicant agreed to do that.
Since there's a little, let's hold off on approving these minutes until we can review the video and make sure it's what was said rather than what we wanted it to say.
I have a suggestion.
Please.
That in addition to putting the suggestion for Chick-fil-A signage facing Vista Hermosa, I could add another sentence saying that suggested all the signage were all the Chick-fil-A signage.
And that's how I remember the discussion.
Be changed to bronze.
The discussion part.
So that there's two different, so that there was two different points brought up.
Okay.
One saying that it should be just Vista Hermosa, and the other saying that all the Chick-fil-A.
Right.
It's just discussion.
That's how I remember the discussion.
And it did end up where the final condition ended up being the one facing.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, we can do that. Okay, do we have a motion with that correction?
Can you read the correction, what the full correction would be, that bullet point?
Well, I have a clarification on that, too. Specifically, what we call just the Chick-fil-A, because it's not all the signage on the side.
We would call it the primary building sign, but.
So the directional signage would not?
No, no.
Okay, so it would just be building, okay, so it would just be suggested that all building mounted signage?
Both.
The two primary signs.
Okay.
I think it doesn't include directional signage or anything like that, because there may be a sign here or there that's mounted to the building that's directional.
So that's why I was just trying to find a title to describe the two signs that you have in mind.
Okay. I think primary would be fine, because all the other directional would be considered ancillary or secondary.
Okay, so it would be suggested the primary Chick-fil-A signage be colored bronze.
Bronze, backlit.
Be colored bronze, backlit, and mounted. That's.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
And are we including the text where we're removing the word "in exchange for," to be, "to make the findings for?"
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I'll move that we adopt the minutes with those changes.
Okay, we have a motion by Ruin, and a second by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have one abstention, so it's five, oh, and one. The next item is the consent calendar, I believe, don't, we have, the next item is oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest, which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? Saying none, we will close oral and written communications. The next item is the consent calendar, which we have no items. So we now go to public hearings. Time limit for applicants is 10 minutes, all other speakers three minutes. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Item A is 990 West Avenue to Vista Hermosa, site plan permit 17400, architectural permit 17403, conditional use permit 17404, tentative parcel map 17405, and discretionary sign permit 18215. Target site, commercial retail center, Eastonage.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. I have a brief presentation on the Target Commercial Retail Site. So the project proposal is at 990 West Avenue to Vista Hermosa. This is in the Forrester Ranch specific plan area. The application proposes to subdivide the property into two parcels. They also propose construction of a multi-tenant retail building with a drive-through building. The existing conditions include the site area of 14.8 parcel size. It's at the corner of Avenue to Vista Hermosa and Avenue to La Pata. This is a major view corridor in our city's general plan. It's also a neighborhood commercial zone, both in the general plan and the specific plan zoning. And the original target was approved in 2010 with multiple entitlements, including sign, master sign plan, and architectural, it was also a general plan amendment, and several other entitlements. So the project has been designed using Spanish Colonial Revival architecture style. It maintains consistent building scale, and that is that it does not exceed two levels, although it's a single-story building. It is Mediterranean landscape has been incorporated into the site plan, and the buildings as designed have been compatible with Target. A pedestrian walkway has also been incorporated. This new walkway will provide a safe path of travel to the site. It will accommodate ADA accessibility. It will also accommodate access to the sports park, and may also help with the impacts of parking with that shared access at the sports park. The project is consistent with all development standards, that is, with the exception of the parking reduction, which requires a shared parking analysis and agreement, which I'll discuss in more detail. The matrix before you might be a bit small, however, it does meet the maximum height, the setbacks, buffer yards, and I will now discuss parking. The conditional use permit is required also for a drive-through use. The coffee drive-through pad is located on the far side of the parcel, and includes 11 stacking spaces. In doing the analysis for the queuing, it was noted that the queuing needed a maximum of nine based on other similar projects for coffee drive-through uses. So the 11 provide more than adequate vehicle queuing for the proposed drive-through. Shared parking. The CUP required for private parking facilities shared by multiple uses is a permitted use in order to deviate from the city's standard requirements for parking. A parking analysis needs to, and was provided. It evaluates the drive-through, the multi-tenant building, and the existing target, and shared parking between each of these parcels. The city parking code requirements were taken into account. We also compared that with the Urban Land Institute's shared parking methodology, which is an accepted method of parking, and an actual field study, which was done at existing peak parking demands on site, on multiple occasions, actually. So with the proposal of the new buildings, the total number of parking stalls would be reduced from 501 to 448 parking spaces. Now, if we base the city parking code with the square footage of the target and the new buildings, it would require 565 parking stalls. This would be a shortage of 117 spaces. However, with that ability to use a shared parking analysis, in this case, based on the ULA shared parking and field study, it was determined that the peak demand was a maximum of 291 in the afternoon. Now, this was a couple of peaks, but at the very highest peak, the max would be 291. Even in that case, though, there was an excess of 150 spaces. The Design Review Subcommittee asked us to additionally include outdoor seating, so although you can provide up to 16 seats for a use when it's outdoor seating, no additional parking requirement, we did incorporate that and ask the applicant to assess that overall. They found that even with the incorporation of the outdoor seating as proposed, the peak demand would be 310 spaces. That leaves an extra 138 spaces on site. Here you can see a few photos of the current conditions for parking. I took these pictures back in July. This is a picture of the site, looking both, I'm actually at the crosswalk there between the two, but you can see that it's fairly empty in July, both in the target lot as well as the out parcel. And then this is a picture of the out parcel with no one parked there. The application also includes a master sign program. This requires a discretionary sign permit, or a DSP, as we call it. There are, there is an existing sign program, which received a sign exception permit in 2010 when it was originally approved. That was for an exception to the overall signage that was on the building as well as the site, which exceeded the maximum square foot. Two of the monument signs remain. This sign program would include both the existing target signs that are there and add some additional signage. I'll go through that with you. So sign one is that existing monument. There are two at the corner of the signalized entry. And on sign type one, which you see in the photo, would not change. Sign type 1A, which looks exactly like this on the opposite side of the street, would add the four tenant signs on those little side panels. Sign type four is another new monument sign that is proposed at nine feet in height. There is a slight bit of the base that's on there, it's not shown in this, but it is in the sign program that's attached to your report. It would also contain four new tenants, and that would be located along the hill to provide additional identification to the tenants that are in the site that cannot be seen from the street. Sign type four is a new monument proposed at the corner of La Pata and Vista Hermosa. It would contain the Target logo bullet, sorry, their logo and the Target name, and then four tenant signs would also be on there. This is a way to allow identification to what is considered a whole center, shopping center now with this project. Sign type six is, excuse me, are two new menu boards for the drive-through, and they would be 30 square feet each in size. I would mention that on, in your report on page 12, there was a carryover from the Design Review Report wherein the applicant had provided a different set of signs, but revised them in response to the Design Review Committee's feedback to specifically affecting sign type number four, which you see here, and changing the design slightly of sign type, this should say sign type two, I apologize, that's a misname. Sign type two here in this picture. So two and four have been revised in response to Design Review. The signs, as computed based on the city's sign code, when we factor in the computation requirements, do actually meet the sign code requirement, because we're measuring around the sign copy, as opposed to the entire wall. So this, the report is misleading, where it says that it does not meet the requirements. I can explain further if you have questions.
So you're saying it's overall, the entire package now, cumulatively, the square footage does meet the criteria?
So the, there was an approval for cumulative, to, an exception to, for Target on one building. So on one building, they weren't allowed to exceed a certain square footage, 64 square feet, and they did exceed that, the number is in the report. These do not exceed, what they do is, we measure around the sign copy based on the computation explanation, definition in the code, so they do meet the sign code requirements, contrary to what it says on the matrix.
As far as total square footage, or just that sign?
Individual signs. There, it doesn't meet, it doesn't infringe on that requirement as a maximum for the overall signage, because that applied to one building, that applied to the one Target building. So that was previously approved in the prior approval. They exceeded 64 square feet. If you, I'll point you to that section of the.
We'll get into it.
I can complete the presentation here really quick and then answer any questions, if that's the appropriate time to discuss it further. So the Design Review and the Subcommittee and the DMT both reviewed the application. Design Review Subcommittee reviewed it on two occasions, and noted that the project met the intent of the design guidelines with their design, but there were minor modifications to the signs, as I mentioned, and there were also that request to include the outdoor seating in the parking analysis. The applicant has provided that information. The Development Management Team approved the project with conditions, and once we published the conditions, we worked with the applicant and the departments to make a few minor changes. There is an errata sheet before you included with modifications to those conditions of approval. So our recommendation is to, number one, determine the project categorically exempt from CEQA. Number two, to adopt Resolution 18034 to approve the site plan, architectural plan, conditional use permit, tentative parcel map, with that errata sheet modifications to those conditions. And number three, to adopt the Resolution 18035 for the discretionary sign permit. If you have any further questions, I'm available. The applicant also has a presentation to provide to you that might answer some additional questions.
Very good. Hold on to your questions for a moment. I just want to say that we went through two Design Review meetings on this project. At the last one, there were just two of us present, and a lot of things were not completed as far as being totally reviewed, signage being one, location of the signs, et cetera. So feel very free to make comment on that. There's going to be a little bit of ability to design on the day yesterday, because the applicant had some kind of self-imposed timeframes that they chose to bring this forward tonight. And we acquiesce to say, you can do it, but without Design Review's full blessing, and understand that there's going to be a little more discussion than usual on this item, so.
Okay, so the items that you did not discuss, I guess, to yourself, was just primarily the signs?
Primary signage, little bit of circulation. We, and correct me if I'm wrong, we really have no discussion as far as the lot split. That's not in our purview tonight. So do we call the, the site, is it the small site, the large site? When the word "site" is used, is it the whole thing?
The, it is a project, the entire project encompasses both Target and the new.
So that is what "site" means, then?
Yes, and the tentative parcel map is before you tonight.
Okay. Okay, do we, let's start at this, and let's start with Commissioner Wu for questions for staff.
Hi, Amy. Thank you for bringing this project to the Commission, and I really like the architectural design. I like that pedestrian connectivity to the street. So for you, I have, I have two simple questions to start off. First is about subdivision. I attended the first Design Review Meeting. I was advised by you that the specific plan, fourth range specific plan has a minimum neighborhood commercial large area to be three acres. I did check the specific plan, that is the case, but I don't see an amendment of a specific plan coming along with this application.
You're right. That was brought up, and the, that's the reason that we are considering this entire project to be both the parcels, and that's why they are tied together with the shared agreement and the access agreement, there is, that will tie them together and make it one project.
But, but we are splitting the site into two legal parcels, are we?
Correct.
So each site will be subject to the minimum law size? Is it?
No, so they're still considering it one project site as far as one, there, there are two parcels, but not, see, I don't have that, that particular part of the, for the specific plan in front of me, but that was the determination early on in response to your comment.
Okay, look, can we ask the city attorney on that? We've got two parcels, separate deeds. Does each parcel have to meet the acreage in the specific plan?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, it depends on what the plan says. I'm looking that up right now. I have not read that language, so give me about five, 10 minutes.
Okay. Chime in as soon as you find that.
Okay. Amy, my second question is pretty minor, but we're going to go into it later with more details. If, if they are two separate legal parcels, when we advertise Target on the new parcel, does it create a condition or circumstance, circumstance we call off-site sign?
No, it's one shopping center. It's not unusual to have one shopping center that is tied together, in this case, with parking and with access agreements, to have the signage in different locations within the center.
For the proposed monumentation at the intersection of La Pata and Vista Hermosa, next to the Target sign, we have four tenants' names. What are those tenants? Are those tenants for the new, new development?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, I just wanted to get my math right on a couple of the signs. So sign two, staff report says it exceeds the square footage by one square foot.
Okay, that is the part where I.
So it does not exceed the square foot, the allowed square footage?
No, it was a carryover from the Design Review. It was a mistake.
Okay, so, so it conforms, it's within 60, 64 square feet?
Yes, so if we look at the, second page is the best one to refer to on the sign program, which shows the square footage. So that, 31.5 is, oh, let's see, that's number two, 24 square feet.
Because we count one side on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, that one's 24, and it is, you're listing it as 10 feet high? And is, is it 10 feet high measured from the top of that pedestal, or the bottom of the pedestal?
So that's a very good question, and it does say that it's nine feet, but if we were to measure the pedestal, they're going to need to show that from grade, it's not more than 10 feet as part of the final plan.
That's what I was looking at, because they, they put it into the slope, but it's, which I think we mentioned in the Design Review, but.
Right.
From that, from the street or sidewalk level, it looks like it's about 15 feet high, so.
So this measurement, you can see on, on Sheet 2R, there's a measurement here of nine, it's nine feet.
Nine feet from?
Here it is, okay. So from the top of this to here, it's measuring nine feet. When they come in for their permit, they're going to need to keep the entire, from, from grade, this will only be allowed to be 10 feet.
Wouldn't it be an average grade, though?
Yes.
On a slope?
Yes, because it's on a slope. That, that can be misleading there.
So, so that pedestal, the pedestal could only be another foot, right?
Yeah.
But then it can be, then it's whatever, a foot or two above the sidewalk.
Right. No, oh, you mean as far as location?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we should look at the.
Because I'm looking at that image of the, the figures, the people they have there for proportion.
So the site plan is kind of farther out, but SP 2R is where we would look at the location of the monument sign. And it doesn't have the measurements on that? So what, one of the things that they took into consideration was the site visibility around that corner. When you're making a left-hand turn out of it, you want to be sure that you have the appropriate site visibility triangle.
So they set the monument sign farther back?
So, it was set farther back, correct.
And up slope?
Yes.
And do we know how far back from the sidewalk that is?
I don't have an exact measurement that would come in. We could ask the applicant that question if they know that.
Okay, that's something I think we should, we should find out, see just how it affects the pedestrian orientation of that. And so, sign four, monument sign four, that is, exceeds the limit, that's 384.75 square feet and nine feet high?
Sorry, again, they don't exceed. The measurement for the computation should be around the face of the sign. 31.5 is for number four, and each menu board is 30 square feet.
So, that number four, 31 point, oh, so each tenant is roughly 15 square feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the whole length of this is, I'm looking at 4R right now, the whole length of this is six feet high and I'm guessing 25 feet?
This is the one on the corner?
Yeah.
Yes, six feet high as far as the wall?
Yeah.
And the applicant has the measurement for how long the wall is.
Okay, so when the applicant comes up, they can address that. It looks like around 25 feet or so, but I'd like to get that number.
And the intent of that was for it to be in the side of the hill, almost as a, similar to neighboring signs, and the applicant has some in his presentation he can show you, so that it was incorporated in size to be compatible with that corner, as opposed to a very small monument that might look out of place.
Okay. I do have a couple of other questions. The CEQA exclusions, when I was looking at that, it looks like these are four new buildings on two pads. I'm just wondering, I didn't really understand why we would find these necessarily exempt. So, can you explain that? It's probably, which one is it?
It's new construction or conversion of small structures, class three, and there are specific findings that you have to make in order to affirm a class three, which are in the attached resolution, some of which, offhand, include that it's not a negative impact to surrounding uses or, and, let's see.
So, we don't have those, we don't have those findings up in the beginning like the other ones? These are-
So, the CEQA findings haven't typically been included in the report.
Right.
It would add several more pages.
No, I understand. Usually it's kind of like, kind of a slam dunk. It's just because these are new buildings on two new pads.
Sure.
You know, and not something that we had included in the general plan. I was wondering, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss something.
Sure, so it's on page two of Attachment One, which is the resolution for this. The exemption is limited to construction of a store, motel, office, restaurant, or similar structure up to 2,500 square feet in floor area and not involving the use of significant amounts of hazardous substance or up to 10,000 square feet of floor area, which this would be. Not involving use of significant amounts of hazardous substance in urbanized areas on a site zone for such use where necessary public services and facilities are available.
Okay, although the fact that I might consider donuts a hazardous substance to me, it sounds good. Condition of approval, 2.17. When I read that, it looked to me like in the condition we were, let's see, that's third paragraph down about onsite traffic circulation and vehicle stacking?
Yes.
It looked like this text was, it said, "Okay, they're required to sit down with city staff and see about working out solutions," but it doesn't require the implementation of a solution. Am I correct about that?
So, this is one of the conditions that the applicant has worked with city staff, and we actually included that in the errata sheet, so I'd actually direct your attention to that errata sheet, where we included one of the potential modifications to include, but not limited to modifying the western drive approach to be an exit only. And here's the additional part, "For all vehicles except commercial deliveries." What this does is it allows Target to continue to make their deliveries if there were ever an unlikely condition where the, there was backup from the drive-through. I'm going to take us to the drive-through picture here. As you'll recall, the drive-through actually has 11 queuing spots on the site here, so here's the window here. There are 11 queuing spots. It would mean that it would have to wrap out around here and come all the way back down to the street for it to become a problem. That's a highly unlikely event, however, we did want to include a condition that should that ever happen, we would ask them to not allow this to be an entrance. However, we did want to leave it open for commercial deliveries for Target because the large trucks need that type of turning radius.
Okay, I guess, I mean, that's good. It's still, resulting modification will be paid for the owner or their tenant. It doesn't, I don't see that it requires it, but I'm not the lawyer, so if our attorney's good with it, I'm good with it. I guess I was thinking more of the parking lot itself, so if, you know, I wouldn't expect that to go all the way down there. I think that that's a pretty remote chance, but if the parking lot itself starts to get jammed up, then that could cause other backups, both in the parking lot and then maybe the Vista Hermosa, people trying to pull in and they can't pull in, things like that. And I was assuming that that paragraph in 2.17 covered that. Out onto Vista Hermosa, maybe not. All right, well, let's leave that to a discussion then. Just, we'll leave that to discussion and see if there's any-
Okay, and if you need anything further, we have representatives from Public Works here to answer those.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, thank you. Okay, Amy, interesting application of ULI's shared parking. I think that's creative, and we haven't seen a lot of that around here, considering we have so many parking issues with these projects. Could you walk us through, just to summarize how that model works and how it was applied here?
I would if I could tell you more than what is in my report and what is in their analysis. I'm going to have their traffic engineer speak to that a little bit further, but essentially it's a way that we can reduce the number of parking based on a long-term study that's been done through ULI.
We have 117 deficiency, so I think that'd be a pretty interesting discussion. I'd like more light on that, so I'd appreciate that.
Sure, they're here to address your concerns about that, so.
Okay, thank you. So, a few more questions real quick. So, sign type two, we've addressed, total height on that. Sign type four, okay, that's going to be a discussion for him, sorry. So, there's a landscape plan here that I think it's intended to tie into the existing plan, and considering that we are trying to create a bigger project, you know, we're addressing a conditional, an existing conditional use permit, like you said, among other entitlements that existed for Target, and there was long discussions about signage, building placements, and landscaping. And one of the areas, I think, of most interest to me is the corner where sign four is. And my question is whether or not staff took a really good look at the approved landscape plan and what's happening there now, current site conditions, or was that just something that wasn't really, a lot of time wasn't spent doing, or did you identify any sort of deficiencies there?
Since this landscape plan dealt mainly with their onsite improvements on the west end, we did concentrate on that. We sent that through our landscape architect, so that was the focus. When the request came from design review to possibly incorporate additional landscape, they did incorporate the landscaping in a pocket of the wall, so we did not do additional review of landscaping that was existing on that corner.
On the hillside, yeah, okay. So, there's been some challenges over the years with past staff members in maintaining that, making sure that the applicant, you know, is keeping true to their promises. Okay, and then the building, the buildings, can we go back to some slides and talk about the rear facades, which are actually going to be like the front facades, even though the access points would be on the other side? How it looks from the street? And so, there'll be service doors back there, and what's plagued this type of use over the years is loss of attention to that detail. And it looks great in plan, but I want to know, not necessarily there, but on, maybe on the entry, the primary entry that signaled, right there. Where are the service doors going to be?
As far as, this is, this lower one here is the back side that you would see driving in.
Okay.
And I, it looks like there's one here. I can let them speak to that a little bit more. Here's another. But there are windows incorporated as well as a trellis.
The signs that are there, are those going to, is there any sort of condition that would address those?
It's part of the master sign program, and so they are limited on their square footage, dependent upon the lineal space they lease.
What about coloration?
Yes, so, signs.
Yeah, so this is going to be an area that's really highly visible. I think there's a lot of detail there. It's pretty well done.
So, although they, it's limited to tenant name or logo, the length is to be determined based on the lineal footage of the building, because they're allowed one square foot of sign for every foot of storefront, 25 square foot of signage per tenant, five-inch-deep fabricated reverse channel letters.
Okay.
Your question was, does it restrict the colors? It just addresses, tenants may use their unique colors and type style on their signage, so it doesn't limit it.
Okay, so there's no-
It's unique.
Okay, so we're not talking about backlit, bronze, backlit, pignon?
Just the reversed channel letters, which is a standard lettering for wall signs.
Okay. And lastly, the, so the project sits the base of a hillside, and so I'm wondering, I don't know if you can pull a rabbit out of your hat right now, maybe look it up. Is that a, is that a city-recognized ridge line above that high point in the back to the north of the project area?
In the general plan? I believe so.
It is?
I believe so.
It's open space to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there any discussion about spinning the development around so that the structures are at the rear, closer to the base of the slope, to take it away from the streetscape and preserve that ridge line?
It was not a discussion for that particular reason. There were constraints, I think, on where they placed the building because of an easement for utilities that run through the property, so it limited the ability for where the buildings could be placed. If you were to place it at the rear, it would probably sit in the middle of the utility easement, which we were not allowing.
That's what I need to know. I don't, I didn't, it might be in larger drawings, but is that easement located?
It's clearest on the site plan for the tentative map, so if you turn to your site, your plans.
Okay, so it's not on the back against the retaining wall?
It's-
Right through the middle?
No, you could see it on, I'm looking at proposed enlarged site plan A012. There's also a very good one in the tentative parcel map, which is going to be C-03. But first, if we looked at A012, there is a utility easement which is shown in gray, a darker gray that runs through the entire property, right down the middle of it almost. I don't know if it helps, but it's this.
All right, thank you, thank you. Yeah.
That was a limiting factor on the placement of buildings.
Okay. Well, that ought about do it. So, thank you then of the traffic engineer. After the other questions of you, I'd like to hear from him.
Mr. Brown?
I just wanted to key, you made a good point about service entrance, delivery. I was wondering, did we satisfy your question?
Oh.
I don't think the question was, in my mind, satisfied.
I want to, thank you. I wanted just to draw some attention to that rear area, and staff brought up the images here on the screen. I think, I'm satisfied with what I see. It looks like it's been addressed. There's lots of details there, and it looks like there's just one door on the main building. There's just one pedestrian door.
There's probably more than one, but-
Oh, I see it.
Isn't that the idea, that you only saw one, right?
Yeah, that's good, yeah, so.
Any more questions? Okay, let's hear from the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, please, let's hear from Mel.
I'm no applicant, but I'd like to speak. Would you take a look at the FRSP and the language for maximum lot or building site area? Works with what we're doing here. The requirement is that the minimum project area for site plan review is three acres. That's what we have here. The entire, the entire area is being reviewed as part of the site plan permit. That's over three acres, so we're well within those parameters.
But when they do go for a lot split, which I think they want to do, I know that Target wants to maintain their lot size large enough that they meet the city standards for parking. That's, I think, what justified where they put the line. If that makes that site less than three acres, are they, what would happen and how would they get their lot split?
We're talking here about a subsequent action?
Yes, because we're not approving a lot split at this moment.
No, so what we have before you tonight is a, is a project site that exceeds the three acres, so that's really all that we can look at for tonight. The site plan permit that's before you is for the entire project site, regardless of the size of the lots that result from the subdivision.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mel.
May I interrupt? We're also looking at a tentative parcel map here, so that is a subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we're looking at, so it's not later.
The site plan permit that's before you is for the entire project site. That's, it's not just for one, one parcel or the other parcel, it's for the entire project site. That's for the entire, I don't know how many acres it is, but it's more than three acres. The language of the plan says that the minimum project area for site plan review, and that's site plan, must be three acres. That's, that's kind of the universe of what we're dealing with here. The tentative parcel map's a separate entitlement from the site plan permit. The site plan permit's for the entire project area.
Does a specific plan has, have a minimum lot area to be three acres?
Not, not that I could find, so.
Can you, can you read that language?
Yeah. You want, yeah, this is verbatim.
About the three acres.
Minimum lot or building site area and width. None, except that the minimum project area for site plan review shall be three acres. And again, it's referring just to site plan review, not other entitlements, and the site plan review, which is a site plan permit, is looking at the entire project area.
That is under the development standard for neighborhood commercial.
This is neighborhood commercial.
And it says lot area.
Project area.
Or minimum lot area, lot size.
There is no minimum lot or building site area or width. Okay, that's, that's the first principle in this, in this subsection five. So, it says there, there is no minimum, except that there is a minimum project area for purposes of site plan review, that's your site plan permit, and that is three acres. So, there is no minimum, again, lot or building site area or width, but there is a minimum for site plan permit review.
Thank you, Mel. We can discuss that more during discussion. Let's have a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening, Kaiden Commissioners and staff. My name is Greg Fick with Taton Associates. I'm representing Kaiden's Capital Acquisitions, who's the applicant, and developing the out parcel. We're really excited to be here tonight. We've been working on this project with staff probably for over a year and a half now at this point, and we feel that we really do have an excellent project before you tonight. at this point, and we feel that we really do have an excellent project before you tonight. Wanted to go over a couple of the benefits for this project. One is that it eliminates a completely underutilized portion of the Target parking lot. If you look at the Target parcel, on the out parcel where we're developing, there is never cars there. In addition, on the western side and at the tail end of the parking, for the Target lot, there really is very sparsely parked cars parked there as well. By being able to develop the site, it really beautifies the shopping center. There's high-level architecture. It brings new uses, new restaurants to the community, provides tax benefits that you don't have by having vacant parking stalls and light poles there. It creates local job opportunities, and there's also, which wasn't part of the original plan, but this new access ramp will be a great amenity for the sports park to get up to the site as well. As we've kind of discussed already, you can see that on an aerial, you can see that there really are not cars parked here, both on the highlighted portion for the Target out parcel, as well as, as I just mentioned, at the tail end of the, of the Target parking lot. And the reason why that they came, that Target has come to Cadence to subdivide this property is because they know their needs, they know their demand, they know that they, this parking lot will never fill up based on the eight, 10 years that they've been there, and it's not going to be an issue. You can see that this, these are pictures that we took of the out parcel. Similar, you see that there aren't cars parked there. Same thing, this confirms the aerial, basically, that you don't have cars parked at the tail end. And this is the basis for the shared parking study that we have as well, that we do have, as part of this approval, we will have shared parking and shared access easement with Target as one unified shopping center. As part of the shared parking study, what it does is it analyzes the peak and the different types of uses. So code requirement for parking is really, understands a single use, but it doesn't really provide an actual demand for the parking for the shopping center when you have a bank, a morning-peak drive-through restaurant that has peak different times, where you have high loads of parking that's needed in the morning, but not necessarily for the peak morning drive-through restaurant at night for the other restaurants. So there's an offset of parking that's part of the shared parking study. And we'll bring the traffic engineer up after, and he can explain in more detail. But the shared parking study did analyze the, the drive-through, the bank, quick-service restaurant, as well as the Target space. And what we found is that with the proposed site, we have 448 parking stalls, 380 on the Target parcel, 68 on the out parcel. And the peak demand for our parcel, the out parcel, is 64 stalls as the shared parking study. So this is the actual demand, this is the actual parking requirement that is needed as part of this tentative parcel map that we're proposing before you tonight. Here's a, here's a graph that you can see, and what it is, is it shows the red line, the 448 stalls that we are supplied, and we took the five highest peak times of weekdays and five highest, five highest peak times of the weekdays, or the weekends, and you can see that there is still 138 stalls left. And this was actually asked by Design Review Subcommittee, where we applied the outdoor seating to this model right here. So even though outdoor seating, if you have less than 16 stalls, it's not required to be counted as parking. This shows that even with, in the peak times that we have, 138 stalls still in the parking lot that are not being utilized at the peak time. In addition, to back up our shared parking study, we went back out this past Saturday, which is the highest time that you'll, you know, it is holiday times right now, which is going to be the absolute peak time. They went from noon to six. They ranged, counted from 386 to 330 cars that were there from 12 to three, and it tailed off towards, after three o'clock. And what we found is that there's, the absolute peak demand still results in adequate stalls for this site. So there are findings to have a shared parking study analysis for this site. It creates the actual demand for the shopping center, and clearly, the code parking requirements don't reflect the actual conditions that are there today. Monument signage, we've talked about it a little bit so far. These are the locations that we talked about, sign type two, really important for us as far as being on the western side of, of the driveway, and I'll show you. But first, we, we went around, took pictures of other monument signs. This monument sign is at a commercial gateway area as well. It's at Avenue to Pico and Avenue to La Pata. Just wanted to bring this to your attention, as you see what our sign looks like too. We feel that we have really well-designed signs that are architecturally integrated into the, the property of the site. This is another couple monument signs for Avenue to Pico and Avenue to Presidio. It's really near its gateway area as well, so you can compare what's been proposed before and what we're preparing, proposing in front of you tonight. This is the monument sign, the existing Target monument sign that's there at the intersection. We feel that it's really important for us to have our tenant names on this monument sign as you're entering in the main intersection to the site. So that's the reason why we have that. Here's why it's critical to have signage on our western entrance. If you can see, as previously mentioned, we're at like a 10 to 12-foot grade difference looking up at the site. In addition, you have a really long left-turn lane coming into the site. And our first signage, as you're traveling eastbound on Avenue to Vista Hermosa, is at that intersection. It's way too late. So we really need signage at this, right here on this slope. It, it's the number-one thing that tenants come in and they ask for when you're trying to get a lease. It's critical in today's retail market to have proper signage to let people know where you're at. Here's, here's a rendering that shows the signage. You know, it is integrated into the slope. We are fine, you know, if we need to modify a condition of approval that says that we will meet the code, you know, based on the pedestal, we're absolutely fine with that. We're not, we're not seeking to provide signage that is, that exceeds code.
A question, are we, can I ask the applicant?
Yes, go ahead.
Particularly with this sign here and this particular monuments, and I understand your, your criticality of advertising your presence. At the same token, I'm concerned, as these cars come down slope, that you have a line-of-sight issue of where that sign's placed for the traffic coming westbound and how they're going to get out there. We had a similar situation on Pico with McDonald's, where we had a monument sign, and they came in for remodel. We made them move because there was a severe accident potential there because of the line-of-sight blockage to westbound traffic. And so I'm really kind of concerned with the placement of that particular sign. And so we might have to have a condition of approval that makes sure that, yeah, you get your advertising you need or the presence you need, but that might have to be moved upslope or angles such so that the traffic come down that, down that exitway there to turn right is, can adequately see the traffic coming towards them.
We'd be absolutely fine with that. I mean, that, that would obviously be a major concern on our end too, to, that if we added a condition that said that we need the site visibility triangle standard, you know, standards, we would make sure that...
I think you got pushed a little to the sidewalk because of the, because of your pathway, your walk pathway, which was a very smart addition in my view. So I think you, because of its presence, you might have moved it more towards the sidewalk. But we have to, I think, minimize the line-of-sight accident potential of the...
Sure. Absolutely.
No, thank you.
And this is just another view of, of the monument signage coming west, westbound on Avenue to Vista Hermosa. Feel that it's important, you know, to be able, for visibility here too, because if you miss this driveway coming in, it, it, there's a lot, there's not really an easy way to turn back around to get to the shopping center. Here's some gateway signage that you see for different monument signs throughout the city. Just wanted to visually present this as you look at our sign that's, that's imposed, superimposed into the existing view here. You know, we feel that it's consistent, it does match the architecture of the shopping center. It is placed back up on the slope, and the reason why is because there is, there are sewer utilities there, and we wanted to push it back a little bit, there's traffic pole boxes and so forth. So it's pushed back up on the slope. We feel that it's really important to have it on La Pata, and the reason why is because when this site was first developed, the street didn't go straight to the Rancher Mission Viejo. So now you have a lot more traffic coming down La Pata as well, which we previously didn't have, and we want to be able to advertise as part of the center that, that we're there too. And, and so it's critical that we were able to have signage that, that reflects that here. Similarly, I mean, if, if we, we're not looking to exceed any requirements or zoning, we're not looking for a variance, we would make sure that we meet the requirements of the code for signage. Just a rendering, I think Amy already went through this, but this is the pedestrian ramp that we have. And then here's just another view, rendering showing off the great design that we feel as part of this project. And so we do have multiple people here tonight. We have our construction manager, we have our architect, we have our landscape architect, we have Target as well out from Minneapolis. So we're here to answer any questions that you have, but we're really looking forward to move this project forward. Did want to address that we are looking for a tentative parcel map approval tonight. We, we have been told there is not a minimum lot area, it is just for the, for the site plan review as mentioned, so. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, question? Wait for some questions here. Commissioner Brown?
To the applicant?
If that's who you choose to ask.
That's, that's what I want to ask.
Yes.
You moved this project forward tonight without full DRSC approval, based on some schedule. What is that, what's driving that schedule?
Sure. And, and what we feel that really the, correct, it was more of the signage than anything. The, the rest of the project, we feel that we had Design Review Subcommittee support on, on the, on the site. There are, there are some end-of-the-year fiscal deadlines for, for Targets to complete the transaction and sale of the property, so that's why it was moved up to tonight.
Okay. Thank you. I'll save some of that Target comment for discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, we will close the...
If you've got a traffic engineer here, I'm sure there's a landscape engineer someone wants to talk to.
How's our 10 minutes doing?
He's going to describe the ULI.
I think we're above it. Okay. We'll hear this quickly.
Good evening, Kyle Mayberry, Lynn Scott Long, Greenspan Engineers, Irvine, California. I kind of heard two things besides, well, one, related to code, and that the deficiency was 117 spaces. I think the biggest factor to that is that the Target requirement is 474, based on code, which it is what it is, but the reality is, based on the data and the counts that were done during what we would consider to be the absolute peak, was in 330-ish. So that alone is 130 spaces there that, it's overstated. So the code may, may actually be really the appropriate number. As it relates to ULI, ULI Urban Land Institute is a, a group that got together in the 80s and put together this, because mixed-use urbanization is a big issue, parking reduction, obviously building too much parking is just inefficient use of, of space. So they went out and surveyed, it's about 15 to 20, the first edition was, was less, but 15, 20 different types of uses, and they developed time-of-day profiles, because as you know, every use doesn't peak at the same time, or, or think of it this way, you don't need code parking 24 hours a day. First of all, when you're closed, you don't need it, so in certain, certain times of the day when they're just not busy. So they developed time-of-day profiles, and what this analysis does is, which is important to understand, it applies the code requirement to those time-of-day profiles. So it's not any haircut to the code. All it's saying is that at certain times of the day, you don't need that total, that total code demand. So certain uses, certain mixed uses work really well. Good example would be an office complex and a movie theater. Two don't open at really the same time at all, so you would have great, straight 100% shared potential. In this case, the uses are really good, and Greg indicated the donut shop, which was based on transaction data, ULI doesn't have a category for that, you know, peaks at eight, nine in the morning, and really, the weekend condition is where we're having the most issue with the demand. Theirs is a little bit like an hour later, eight to nine to 10. By one o'clock, there's really no donut, very little donut coffee shop demand. The bank on a weekend closes one, two, three, that demand goes away, whereas Target, the quick-serve food, the retail, doesn't really get going until the mid-afternoon. And the data from their counts last weekend show it's three o'clock is their peak. So this is really just an analysis that shows that applying code demand to each individual use is an inefficient way to design your parking. So in this case, the mix is really efficient, and the results are what they are.
Very good. We've exceeded the 10 minutes for applicant questions. I think what let's do, let's, for the, during discussion, I will allow you to ask questions of the traffic engineer during discussion, because this, this could go on forever, I think. So, and any other statement you want to make quickly?
Oh, no. No, I think I was, my intent was to explain the concept.
We will probably welcome you up for questions during discussion.
My pleasure.
And keep this moving along. So let's close applicant presentation, open it up for public comment. Do we have any cards?
No.
Okay, let's open it up for then our discussion, and I want to make a quick summary of where we're at. The architecture, we reviewed very carefully. The buildings themselves, we were comfortable with and agree with the applicant that that wasn't a primary issue at this point. For discussion that we need to get into detail tonight, I think they've solved that issue. Apparently, I hit a nerve when I, I'm the one that made the request, that since they were asking for reduced parking, that they'd better include the parking for the outdoor seating, because that's based on, if you had your normal parking, we grant you additional seating without getting parked. But once you required less, I felt it was appropriate to have to put that into your calculations. It only made sense. Then we are working just on the one site as far as, and I'd like in the discussions, let's try to organize this so we're not talking about 19 things at once each time somebody gets to speak. If we start possibly with site plan and conditional use permit first, let's discuss those items, because everything is based on that. So let's start, if, if you want to discuss the parking, let's do that. That's part of the conditional use permit, and then that will flow into site plan permit, and then we can go from there.
Everybody agreeable on that?
Sure. Do you want to start, Don?
And then do, and then do...
We'll do our discussion. Signage last, because that can be a standalone issue if we need to make it.
No, I'm fairly comfortable with the parking analysis, it's very similar to slices of tile that the city does in their own parking studies. So I thought the parking study was very well done. And I also was up at Target last weekend and saw, just don't never say never that it's full, it was pretty close to it at a, about one o'clock when I was up there with your maps in the hood of my car on your site, looking at your site, and looking at the other parking lot. So it was, it was close. But the parking study, I think, was, was fairly well done, and I can support the findings of it. I had a little bit of an issue in discussion here of the actual flow within the commercial area of this particular picture we're looking at right now. In other words, once everybody got to the top of the hill either way, whether you turn it into the, the stacking and queuing kind of worked out, but it's the mix in the middle of this whole thing that I'm still, I guess the only area I have a little bit of concern about of how it flows in the middle of the Colosseum, so to speak. And that's the only item that I, I was trying to visualize when my car was parked up there, what islands get pulled out, how the cars would make, come up the main drive, left turn. I can see how they're going to work their way to the, to the queue and into the stack, but the people that are going to get in and out, go to the bank and kind of dodge everything else is what I'd like to get the feelings of for my fellow commissioners, I guess. Where I'm, where I'm, I guess I'd like to see a little more discussion in this particular aspect of, of the issue, I'm a little, I'm glad I asked the question about why we're here tonight, because 10 years ago, in 2010 for Target, we, we were rushing for a Target Target, and I don't particularly like that end-of-year financials I used to live with, and I don't see why we need to push for that ourselves. ourselves, we want to get this right. Because Target only opens their stores in some southwest United States on a certain day of the year, and if we missed that date, it was going to sit empty for six or nine months or whatever the discussion was. And we ended up rushing, and we ended up missing the five-sided building and forgetting about the pot being pushed through and coming down, so. Far as end of year financials, I have no concern about that, I want to get this right. And so, I'd like to have a discussion about amongst my colleagues here of how the middle of the mix works in your own mind. I guess it works, but I could see a lot of head-on conflicts there in the middle, that's all I'm worried about, enough.
Okay. I'm going to jump in real quick before Commissioner Blackwell. Don hit the point that I've been kind of mentioning during design review. The site has forced us into being a little awkward and a little circuitous in the flow of traffic within the site, the small site itself. My concern is that we don't create the same things that happen at other sites in the city where, let's say the Ralph's site up on Los Maris, they've got a Trader Joe's, and it's a little isolated area in the corner, there's plenty of parking, absolutely plenty of parking for the overall shopping center. But that little zone gets so flooded with cars and traffic, trying to get around and get the closest spot they can to that particular store, it causes a real circulation problem, and that occurs in some other areas. And one of my concerns is coming up the Bane Road or coming up the side road, you do not see that parking lot until you've already turned into it. So, you have no way of judging whether there's a parking stall in the center or not. So, I can see that people are going to be turning in there looking, and that's going to add quite a bit of traffic in there for looking, looking for parking and not finding it, and having to get out, and the way it's set merging with the drive-through traffic, the way that works right now. You come down into the site, you have to just come around back, you've got to merge into the drive-through lane and come up to get back out to get to the main lot. So, that's something we should discuss and see how much we can tolerate as far as that goes. So, take a look at that and think about it a little bit, and we can discuss it more as we go on. Commissioner Blackwell?
Well, yes, I, thank you, I share your concern, both commissioners have spoken regarding the stacking issue, the directional component. It's true. You know, I've been up to the Target use hundreds of times, maybe more, I don't know, but a lot, and that is, that is a decision point at the top of that hill. Once you've arrived there, you are in fact in the parking lot. It's, you really don't have a lot of time to make decisions, people are egressing, they're leaving, trying to get down into the, down to the signal, and it's a quick decision. So, assuming there'd be some success with the drive-through, you know, the queuing could in fact be a problem. If we're beyond the 10 or 11 cars that are shown here, there's really nowhere to even control with cones. I don't see where that would be with the widths we have and the space that we have and the function of those spaces. You have a through corridor, back down Hermosa on the other side, you have folks piling in at the top of the hill. I just don't have a level of comfort with that part of the design for that reason. The other concerns I have about the site plan, though, I think the design is good, I like the aesthetics, I like the scale, I think it looks pretty good to shoehorn for establishments in there. I think it's a pretty good job. I'm not super comfortable with the location, I think it's a bit of a snub at the community to bring it up to the edge of the property line there, rather than pushing it back under the ridge line, which is visible from Hermosa. Traveling back towards a freeway, you look up and you're not, no longer going to see a ridge line, you're going to see the portions of this exposed architecture, which will be softened by some plant material that's in the plan and also existing, which helps a little. Not super comfortable with the location. I think even with the easement, some more creativity could have been applied to push these buildings back farther from the edge of the street. The conditional use permit, I have no issues with the CUP. I mean, I think it's well put together, the conditions are effective, just the site plan. The site plan itself, I think, is just not the best it can be for this community. We've got, we've got Target, which is big box retail, and it's big, and it's white, and it's right on the edge, and it's right on your face, and I was very disappointed to see, I'll be honest, I was disappointed to see that happen to be built that way. I think it would have been better pushed back closer to the hillside, away from the streetscape. So, this really does not lend to that, that vision in my mind. You know, it creates more massing along the streetscape. It's not going to be horrible, but it's something that should have been addressed, and I think, I think there's room for improvement there.
Okay. Commissioner Rowan?
Yeah. Michael, those are interesting comments. I mean, your points well taken with the ridge lines, we've, this is a place, we have a lot of open space here. We actually encourage people, or have been in more recent years, to push their buildings forwards and put the parking lots in back, because we see a lot of places, we've got acres and acres of parkage and parking, and that leads to monument signs and stuff way back, and stuff we don't like to see, but a lot of those aren't, don't have open space right next to them and right behind them, and so maybe some sort of compromise, you know, might have been in order. That's, it's an interesting observation I hadn't thought of. I do know that after the first design review meeting, they did, there were some tweaks done to the flow that improved it. I agree that it's a tough spot, there's easements, there's this, there's that, so there has been some improvements to it, and I appreciate that. Bart in particular brought up some good ideas in design review, so I just wanted to mention that. I will say with the parking, I tend to think that we're not going to have much problem with the shared parking, and that's going to be isolated there in that parking lot. A lot of times when we have shared parking agreements, we're dealing with a city street someplace on Del Mar, where there's going to be a lot of impact to a lot of other places. The only possible impact that I see, if something's wrong about the study, is the overflow's going to go to the Vista Hermosa sports park. So, I had a question for the traffic engineer or the applicant, either one. Is there a remedy you might propose if it's found that there's some chronic use of the parking lot in the sports park due to overflow in your parking lot? I don't think it's likely, but I'd like to see if we've got some remedy just in case.
Would the parking engineer like to address that?
Sure. As Kyle Mayberry, LOG engineers, the lot is a city lot.
Yeah, that building is owned by the city, the sports park is owned by the city.
Across the street.
So, I mean, without kind of getting into what the parking management is for the lot, sometimes you can, you know, sign it with some kind of limit to the amount of time you can park. I mean, I would expect that any overflow from this would use kind of that ridge area on the other side, the edge of the Target lot, realistically, just because it's...
Just back behind the Target building?
Well, no, I just mean just on the part of the Target lot that's not used, which is right by the drive aisle, I would expect that would be the area where you, this would overflow to, which is really what we analyzed.
So, this is if all the spaces are being used currently, you know, so all the shared parking is being used, where would they park at that point, other than Vista Hermosa, or what other kind of remedy would we have? Because they're not going to park on the street on...
Right. Poaching is certainly, you know, an issue, and in this case, there really isn't other than that lot there, and I would expect that if they were to, you might get both mixture. I don't know, I don't know the capacity of the sports lot and whether there's any overflow condition, but I would expect that the three lots would kind of work together to some extent.
So, you see perhaps one remedy might be another, an additional shared parking agreement with the city in that AVH lot, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, well, my first comment would be is, the likelihood of this entire 448 being utilized by this, the two uses, seems extremely unlikely, considering that we analyzed, we added the outdoor parking, we looked at, we actually did a little calculation with the counts done last weekend, which was, ULI says you're supposed to park the highest, the 30th highest hour, so my expectation would be as the part, the counts done last weekend, we're probably in the highest 10th hour of the year, considering that there's probably two hours on each weekend over the last five weeks of the holiday season. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that to happen, and if the poaching were to occur in that lot, I understand if the poaching were to occur in that lot, I guess potentially, my expectation would be is you wouldn't have all three of them kind of peaking at the same time, but I mean, you, you may actually have people that would park in the sports park, and the demand of the center, this project, would be parked over there.
Well, I mean, it's fine.
So, yeah, so I suppose...
Play soccer and then comes, walks over shore, but that's fine.
Right. So, the person, the demand that you had for the restaurant, instead of being in this lot, would be over there, so you've saved that parking space, so you're right, they all could work together.
To summarize it, how much overparked or underparked is the site? You've already given us a number, but I don't have it in front of me.
100...
It's deficit 117.
Well, no, from the city standards, but from your calculation, there's even more parking.
It's overparked. In other words...
You have more parking than you need by...
Correct.
Do you remember...
138 sites, spots, I think.
138 or 64.
So, 138, if we apply every kind of severe situation, it was about 40.
I think there's a safety factor here that's...
And I hear there's a safety factor, I mean, I'm not arguing that that it's highly unlikely, we just haven't had this kind of condition before in my memory, so I want to make sure we cover all our bases, and in that, you know, if Dunkin' Donuts gets very popular or whatever, what, you know, what is an alternative, so.
Don wants to chime in real quick.
I just like, you're kind of going at a what-if, what-if, what-if type thing for, you know, where this can go, which is probably, maybe it might be a bridge too far. I think what we're going to see with that walking trail, 2% slope, add on, actually it was smart in a way, because I had three children that were student athletes, and all three of them went to top colleges on full rides, soccer and football, and what they're going to tend to do is go park in the sports park and walk up that path to lunch, because they want to keep their parking spot over there in the park, it's over there in the sports park. As a parent, that's what I used to do, and if I had walked to a restaurant with the team, I would do that. And conversely, I think we're going to see like when they run the fair up, the village fair, where the Parks Foundation has that whole, the whole meadow up there with merry-go-rounds and everything else in it, and that's when the sports park fills up, and we might have people parking the other direction, parking in Target and walking the other direction on it, and a few times a year when they do that. So, I think it's, I think we're, I think we're okay.
Well, I mean, just for a discussion, I mean, my only, I agree that it's an unlikely scenario, but it is the only other possible place for anyone to park if there is overflow. So, and people parking there and, you know, playing soccer and running over for some coffee and donuts or whatever, great, that's, that's not a problem, but I was only looking for sort of the last, you know, you know, the last stop, having something that says, okay, and if for some reason this study doesn't turn out the way that we all expect it to turn out, you know, what can we do, what will the applicant do as a result, so that we're not eating up parking on the sports park? So, that was my, that was my concern about that one. So, I think most of my other, I'm still thinking about, other than that, I'm still thinking about Michael's issue, but I'll save the signage for later.
Okay. Commissioner Wu?
Yes, I had lots of question about parking, so we stay here. I believe at the end of day, the situation will be okay. If there's ever overflow, the nearest residential parcels are about half mile or more away, so they really won't stay there. So, there's a little likelihood that on a busy day, people may park in the sports park, but I think we can wait and see if that actually becomes a problem, and we can, we can figure out a way. My question is mostly about your, your study.
Uh-huh.
As I said, I believe your result, at the end of day, is probably close to what it really will be, but you showed us, you showed us an extremely low number, and your methodology, I mentioned, is a blended methodology, made of quite a few modifications to the standard model, so I want to ask you about a few questions. First question is about your peak demand. When you said a peak demand of 310, and that's based on, your survey was down in October.
Mm-hmm.
That's not peak demand in December, right? That's, that's your estimated peak demand with the new proposal in October.
Correct.
So, if you go there in July, you find the parking lot would be desolate, just like the photo shows.
Right.
If you go there in December, you may not have enough parking. So, why December, why October number is good for the project or good for the year without seasonal adjustment?
So, October would be considered a typical condition, schools in session, not a lot of holidays, not a lot of vacation. However, we did apply a 5% contingency to...
That's a separate...
So, that was, we adjusted October to, we gave a contingency, a seasonal adjustment to increase it. However, however, based on the data that the study that Target did, we applied the December condition from the 15th to the same model, and we still have a surplus. Now, it went from 138 to 30, but that did represent a December condition. I still believe it's not the 30th highest hour, which is what ULI requires, but it still, it still produces a surplus. So, that, the question of the timing kind of goes away, because we did actually apply the December counts to that same traffic model condition.
That's an observation Trippier made just a couple of days ago.
Correct, the 15th.
15th, okay, because we went there too, so...
Right.
And I would estimate that there's about 300 cars on the time I went there.
Yeah.
It's about the same as you said.
It was 333 was the peak.
Okay. Another question is, in your analysis, you categorized the fast approved restaurants as general retail. New development, there are four tenants, right, a bank, a bank, along with two fast food, two fast food restaurants.
Quick serve.
Quick serve. ULI has available profile for fast food restaurant, but you use a general retail.
Correct.
You know, the retail has very different daily demand curve, well, maybe not extremely different, but they're different. Why you decided not to use the fast food profile that's available in ULI and replace it with the retail file?
Sure. In our experience, quick serve food relates to sandwich shop, kind of this, the store, the restaurants that have less than 12 seats, where you're buying, you're buying ice cream, candy, sandwich shop. Restaurants that you, parking is a function of duration, you're not sitting and staying as long, so it's more like going into a store, like buying shoes, you walk, you go in there for a little bit, you buy some, you leave. So, the, the profile, we found, the retail profile is more indicative. The fast food profile has a high morning demand and a high dinner demand, when in reality, the quick serve food is more in the middle of the day, and the retail, the retail peaks at the middle of the day, so actually using the retail in this case provided a little higher demand.
Another question is about your base parking ratio.
Mm-hmm.
ULI has base pack, base parking demand ratio per use, and instead, well, the ULI number, some of them are based on ULI's own study, like shopping, others are from ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineer.
Mm-hmm.
Their baseline is not what they require, that's just a starting point, because the real power of reducing parking demand is on the share, is on... real power of reducing parking demand is on the share, is on the presence factor. In other words, the daily demand, they have different peak, those peak offset each other. But the baseline sometimes is lower than city requirement, sometimes is higher than city requirement. And for particular users here, the retail baseline is higher than the city required. So I wonder why, well, you also made a statement that, that the city required parking is, it's the same as the ULI numbers. You know, the city, all the municipalities, they have, sometimes they have similar parking, for example, for office building. But other time, they have vastly different parking requirement. There cannot be an accident that the city, the city was saying, committed parking requirement happened to be exactly the same as the ULI baseline numbers. Why you decide to use the city's number instead of the higher ULI base ratio?
So first of all, I don't recall indicating that the city's code was the same as ULI's code. So, yeah.
I'll give you an example. The city asks 3.3 spaces per 1,000 square feet for retail.
Right.
ULI's number, including the staff and the customer, add up to about 3.6. They're also different between weekdays and weekends. They're higher.
Yes.
But you use a lower number as your basis to become compounded by the daily curve.
So in our, in our experience, the ULI demand ratios aren't nearly as precise as their profiles. They update the profile data, the demand data is nationally based. It doesn't have nearly the accuracy that the city code ratio has. And we always find it more appropriate to apply the city code ratio. Just because the city, we find it much more defensible to use the code because the code is the city's requirement and the absolute. And just applying the ULI time of day profile to understand you don't need all those spaces all day long. So we found, and we do a lot of these, pretty much all jurisdictions, that the code is the most appropriate. In most cases, the code overall is more intense than the ULI demand rates.
And then also for the fast food restaurant, the drive-through parking demand, you basically recreate a daily profile because it's not available anywhere else.
Correct.
But your basis is the study for stacking, there's attachment for your stacking study. I don't see the parking demand there. How do you arrive at those?
It was receipt transactions from Dunkin' Donuts project that we worked on in Irvine. So basically, we got transaction receipt data, which showed that the busiest time in the weekday was between eight and nine, and then between, in the weekend, it was between nine and 10.
Perhaps the drive-through has a different profile than the city?
The, yeah, the profile, it was a separate, a separate study.
How do you...
The queuing study was merely based on observations at similar facilities during the peak times and recording every two minutes or three minutes, whatever the maximum queue was.
Okay.
So two different, two different approaches.
All right.
But I think clearly the donut shop, the profile makes sense.
Well, I just want to make a comment about your overall methodology. I think there are, you know, there are easy ways to reach the same or similar conclusion. But your way is, you know, you made so many adjustments to, to the model. Each adjustment is biased in favor of a lower number, which makes me a little uncomfortable. But I believe, the simpler method I would offer to share with you is really simple. If you go to the site and survey the parking in October, and you find the peak demand is 3, is 230 plus minus on a Saturday morning, Saturday 1 o'clock, which is a peak time for Saturday, you can simply do a seasonal adjustment. For example, we just add 50% to get a December number. That will put you at 350 plus minus.
Okay.
Then you say, we just, we simply provide what the city asked for, for the new development, which is 91. You add them together, you're at 440 plus minus, and you're good. It's really straightforward and it's simple and easy for people to understand.
I would, I would have two responses to that. One is, with all due respect, we didn't really make any adjustments to the model. We used ULI when it was available. The donut shop didn't have ULI. We applied data from a transaction, which we feel is appropriate. As it relates to the seasonal adjustment, ULI does have time of yearly seasonal profiles. The thing you need to be careful is, it's not always appropriate to look at a December condition because some of the uses aren't true shopping center uses. So in this case, December is probably the peak condition for Target, and Target can speak to that. The good news is, we have that data. So in hindsight, we could have actually provided a larger adjustment, but we do have that data. And through that adjustment or the adjustment, we end up with adequate parking. We would have had a smaller buffer, which I think is what you're implying. But nonetheless, it was our task to try to create a realistic demand. And either way, we end up with a surplus.
Well, without making that statement and explaining to people, the general public looking at your study, they wouldn't know. They wouldn't know that retail has a valley of the demand in July, which is, which is 40% of December, or maybe 35% of December. They wouldn't know that. And how do they know that your survey in October is good, right? And you already explained it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Kozinski, did you have, your light was on earlier.
I was looking at...
Turn on your light. Thanks, sorry.
I was looking at the traffic flow and the number of parking spots. And I was going to comment on what Bart said earlier, as far as the number of people going into this, what looked like a closed off area, and trying to find their parking spaces and then trying to get out once they realize most of it's full. I counted around 19 spots in the, in the prime zones. And the rest of the spots, I guess, are on the outskirts of this interior area and the rest of Target. What I didn't see before, and I see now, you're offering the flow to go where the arrows are pointing, but there's a little stop sign. So it looked like, it looked like the people from, from the donut shop were just going out and they had their choice of going to the, going straight to the right or left. But what wasn't clear, and the tree is kind of covering up, there's a stop sign. And there's more flow going on. I was concerned that people were backing up and having, once they realized the lot's full, they'd have to do a three-point turn to get out. But that is not the case. It looks like this is very well designed.
Correct. That loop, that loop scenario that is tied into the, the drive-through is to account for anybody that comes down and can't find a space to circle back down.
Yeah, it wasn't really clear, but thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Pretty good. And I'm going to jump in because I, I do want to comment that when I looked at that traffic in there, I was concerned that we're adding additional cars to the exiting on the stacking. So I'm more concerned, not necessarily about the people coming in to the drive-through. But once we're adding cars into the exiting for the drive-through, we're going to slow down the cars getting out of the aisle. So they aren't going to be able to necessarily move forward as quick. And that was a concern on the site, and I think it needs to be addressed. I don't have a solution for it right now, but I think that would be a condition that should be addressed. In other words, right now, you come...
Yes.
You get your coffee, you put it in your cup holder, you start driving out while there's cars who are trying to get out of the parking lot, coming into that same lane in front of you. It's not like McDonald's where typically you go straight to the exit.
Correct.
Or out of there. So, and there's a number of stop signs and it's, all congests right at the major crosswalk going across the parking lot. In other words, we've got one coming into a diagonal, we've got people coming this way and that way. We've got a three-way intersection at a crosswalk with no control.
So...
And I don't know if you're the one to be asking this question.
I can, I can offer, yeah, I can offer my, my evaluation and my opinion of the situation. I think there's two things to look at. One is, can all the movements be made safely? And I think the answer is, there's room for everything to be made. There's no site instance issues. Then the other question is, of these movements, are there a lot of volume doing this movement? Because the two together can create an issue. So clearly, not clearly, but in our, in our estimation, our analysis, expert opinion, the amount of volume that's going to be coming into this kind of dead end area is not great. We're not talking about a significant amount of, of trip generation that's going to use it. The other thing that's good about drive-throughs, from a standpoint of the exiting, is that it's metered. You probably, the car, there's about a two or three minute break between each car exiting the drive-through. So if a person gets their coffee and they go to drive exit, there's going to be a couple of minutes for anybody in a circulating condition to be able to get into that condition. So when you leave the drive-through, you can either go to the right, in which you'd never conflict with the recirculating person. And even if you do go through the circulating movement, I'm not sure why you would, other than just maybe not knowing exactly where you're going, you're only doing that every couple of minutes. So the, so you have a circulating car every, I mean, I don't know how often it's going to be full, every couple of minutes. So the likelihood of an issue goes down, even though it is more of a kind of a unique flow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Brown, let's come back this way.
Yeah. As far as the inner parking lot, is there any way you can expand something like this, Gabriel? I'm trying to find it.
Did it happen to be on your power point at all?
Yeah.
Was it on the power point?
I think it's on Amy's.
It's smaller.
It's smaller, okay. I'm going to try to pull it up from the website, so if you give me a...
Sure. I'm just, you know, concerned about the particular area here, the walk, between the two buildings, there's an exit from the, the drive-through, you've got flow across, the cars are coming out, cars coming in.
It's, it's not intuitive.
It's kind of where I think the fulcrum point is. And what I'm, I'm concerned about is, we have a parking lot about a half a mile from here at Ralph's, where we've had a lot of issues with it. We didn't design it, we gave them a requirement, it was private. But we ended up with a customer and their child coming out of the store, getting run over by a truck. And the father was killed in Ralph's. And so there's a lot of, kind of where we're coming from with this. And so, and here's this eight-year-old child watches his father killed right in front of him. So that's where this area where I'm kind of coming from, this confluence. And maybe a mitigation thing for consideration is what Ralph's has done, which is now is constantly blinking, kind of lights on that walkway area there. Similar, similar to the demand crossing lights by down El Camarillo and their dukes.
They actually, I think, have that on the main drive coming in the middle when they've got the blinking lights, but not within the internal part of the site.
Is some one way to mitigate a safety concern of a confluence inbound, outbound, and people walking across the parking lot from stores ABC to pad one, you know, people weigh the flow of the walkway that brings them up from the park, foot traffic, the car traffic, is another, another way to mitigate. This mixed master in the middle here, but that's kind of where I'm coming from with the concern of this parking lot that's about a half a mile from here. And the way it all, we're sitting here looking at plans and doing the best intentions we can here, and then reality sets in when you finally build something. And that parking lot down there about a half a mile from here has been a lot of negative comments on it from the community about it. So that's kind of where we're, where we're coming from, I think, for you, trying to get your project through. You're getting there. There you go.
Commissioner Baughall?
Yes, thank you. Just to touch once again on, on the parking lot issue, and to Commissioner Ruwan's comment, he, I understand the intent to sort of hide the parking. It's unattractive. I think the exception would be a parcel like this, it's elevated from the right of way. Parking is just not visible. On the outer edges, yes, but on the interior, no, you can't, you can't see it. That would be the exception here. So just wanted to point that out, that it's, that's an important piece of it. So in trade, we get more structure. I still, I stand behind my statement about the design, hearing the other commissioners comment on the flow and having discomfort there. I see some problems at the ingress to the, the drive-through causing backup. There's no opportunity except for a three-point turn. Should one miss that quick left turn in, coming in from the signal, they're going to be embedded into the parking lot and have to make a decision, turn right, go all the way around, or turn left to try to get back to the, you know, the drive-through or the bank or what have you, and then get stuck potentially behind a car that's backed up in the, in the queuing and not have a way in, other than going in the outway, if you will, which is not what we want to do. I think this is a work in progress, in my opinion. I think the design could be revisited to, it seems to be designed for maximum visibility to the front. And I get that, I'm sensitive to it, but less sensitivity to a better and safer design in the parking and flow, traffic, traffic inside the lot itself. So I'm having lots of discomfort with this design as it is right now.
Okay. So what I've gathered in this first round is, the CUP and count, we're probably pretty comfortable with. We'll see how that goes at the vote. On the site plan, they've got so many restrictions. The roads are in, the Target's got their truck circulation that they don't want to lose, they need that. We've got the easement. There really is not a pad for buildings other than where they are without drastically reconfiguring, retaining all sites. And they've got some, I'm sure, some pretty heavy off-site improvements to do also to make this thing work. So I think the buildings may be in the appropriate place. I don't see where else they can go. We don't have an ordinance or anything to protect ridgeline view, I don't believe, on this street, or anywhere in the city, actually, other than scenic corridors.
There's a ridgeline ordinance for development in the town.
But you can't develop on the ridgeline.
Correct.
But, well, I think you can on buildings down below, you can. I don't think, at least I'm not aware of one. Yeah, I see staff shaking their head to that one. And this building is really, we see the buildings and when we look at it, these are small buildings. I mean, this is not a big, huge project. And there's a pretty good gap in between them. So I'm comfortable on that one. Let's go, so we talked about CUP, we talked about site plan.
If I could interject one thing about this, just...
Comment on that, Commissioner.
Just, just to Michael's point, I, and you make some very good points on that too. I didn't think of this when we were in design review. I will say that none of the renderings we have are really showing how the building looks from street level, from Avenue de Vista or most. They all seem to be, you know, 10, 12 feet high from that perspective, if I'm not mistaken. So it would be nice to see, you know, just so we could kind of cover what Michael's talking about.
Fine words going away here.
Get a view of that.
You want the reference or the...
Yeah, like, you know, the images.
I think a couple of colored ones. While, while we're pulling it up, can I, I might make one comment, if I could.
Commissioner Brown?
No, I kind of agree with what Commissioner Crandall's, this reminds me, this site reminds me a lot of parallels of Starbucks down in Pico. In other words, what, what size that entire project was underground. You know, we had easements for sewer, we had easement for power companies. We, you know, we had a gas station next door with three tanks, sandwiched between McDonald's. In other words, what you don't see is what really drives the site. And when you look back, I just looked at the plate, and when we, when they designed the original Target in the parking lot with the building in front, 2010, all, all the stuff is in the back. So the buildings are where they are, kind of like you say, Bart, driven by things we don't see. So I think they are where they're at. And I'm kind of comfortable with the architecture of it. I'm comfortable with a lot of the CUP part of it. The parcel map is where the flow is, I think it is. Site plan, I guess, the only thing I'm worried about is the flow. Everything else, I, I think I can make findings. That's what I wanted, bottom line, say. But I think I wanted to support your, your comment on where, where things are situated.
Okay. So we've got additional use permit architecture. Does anybody have any comment specifically on the buildings themselves? I know lighting, we, we talked about in design review would be, we don't see that on the plans, but would be... plans, but would be consistent with other Spanish colonial revival lighting, it'd be shielded. Any, and, oh, there we go.
There, here.
There, there's the kind of light, yeah.
And then these here.
Although they aren't located on the building yet, but that's fine.
This would be, and then security lighting.
Now, what findings do we have to make on the tenant?
Just, I'm sorry.
You're the lighting guy.
Just a word on the lighting. Do we have any, because of the large open space area there, are there any restrictions on the lighting currently?
No, everything just needs to be shielded, and there is a condition in there.
But just regular shielded, okay. This, yeah, I'll just mention, this area's a little different if you go to the, up by the outlet mall and Marblehead Coastal, you'll see, for instance, this is not in the coastal zone, but the coastal commission, you know, a lot of those lights that are up there are actually blacked out on one side. And it's to black it out for the wildlife that's in that area. Now, we have this open space here, there's a lot of flora and fauna, you know, out there. It's something to consider. I know when we were talking about our lighting ordinances, which we don't have yet, but it's been on hold for a while, but we had talked about certain lighting standards that edged open space because of the open space quality. So we may want to consider, be a little more sensitive to the lighting beyond just full cutoff, kind of what the state standards are, for lighting that can be, so we don't dump direct lighting on, not just not on somebody else's property, but also not on the open space, and no glare from the open space, into the open space, things like that. So those might be things we need to be sensitive to, particularly because we saw that sort of thing when the sports park came in. Granted, those lightings are far stronger than anything that's going to be in here, but they are still visible from a distance. So we want to be, I think we want to be sensitive to that and have a little more detail, say what's going on on the other side of the building, lights that might be facing the open, the open space area, and even now that I think about it, lights that might be visible from a distance to the residences there, which are already affected by the sports park.
So Amy, did you have a comment?
I was just going to bring your attention to condition 5.7 lighting. The applicant shall submit and the city planner shall approve a letter from the preparer of the lighting plans confirming that all lighting has been installed in accordance with the approved plans and that lighting conforms to all standards set forth in the municipal code. You'll remember, this was one of the standard conditions that you just reviewed and approved, so this sends them back to the city's municipal code requirements.
Yeah, and I'm, what I, it just, what occurs to me is there's two special conditions here. One is its proximity to open space, and the other is that we know that the site right across the street has dealt a lot of light pollution to the residences that are even half a mile, a mile away. Now, and granted, that's because of the nature of the sports park, too. It's not just because it's light, it's the nature of the lighting as well. But because those residences have already been impacted by the sports park, I think we should be kind of sensitive about that. This is actually at a higher elevation than the sports park is, probably roughly at the elevation of the current lighting there. So not something that I had put together until now, but I think, I think that that's something we're going to need to think about in the conditions of approval, perhaps.
Okay.
See what other people feel about it.
Commissioner Wu, did you have a comment on either the site plan permit, architectural permit, or conditional use permit?
Yeah. On the architecture permit, I like the architecture, I think it looks really nice. Site plan, I recognize there may be some potential conflict on the circulation, but as a package, I would support it. I think putting the building up front on the street is actually a nice thing. People can see the building, and that also lets them to rely less on signage. And the building makes a better representation for themselves instead of a sign. So I'm going to support the conditional use permit, too, without much elaboration. For the tentative parcel map, I'm going to support it. That is based on our city attorney, that's only based on the city attorney's reaffirmation that there is no legal minimum site for a lot, for a legal parcel in that specific plan. And I can wait, I can wait to talk about the discretionary sign permit. An additional comment on the site plan is the pedestrian connectivity from the site on a slope to the public sidewalk is a very nice thing to have. I think it actually helps some people from a sports park to walk across the street and up to the parcel to use those facilities. It's a booster for the business. It also potentially helps the shared parking, although it's not in the parking, shared parking analysis, but one can imagine that some people will decide not to drive a car to the lot instead, because of the convenient connection, and they can just walk there. I think it's really a nice thing to have on the site. So that's my position, I'm going to support all of them, except the sign permit, which we will talk about later.
Okay. So anybody else want to chime in on the tentative parcel map? I think Jen summarized it pretty well. So anybody want to chime in on that? Okay, Commissioner Brown?
No, I'm kind of with Commissioner Wu in this. I can make the findings for the conditional use permit, the tentative parcel map, and architectural permit. The design is very well done, you've put a lot of good thought into it, the parking analysis is good. As far as the site plan, most of the findings I can make, other than the issue in the center part of that parking lot, which would probably be, you know, finding B, whatever, the intensity, whatever, we've got to mitigate that in my own mind. All the other findings I can make, as I just stated, Commissioner Wu, other than we just need to tweak something with the parking lot there as far as the site plan and then the monument sign adjustment for the wide of sight. Other than that, I can make the findings for everything.
Okay. Commissioner Kozinski?
Yes, I could also make the findings for the site plan, architectural permit, the conditional use permit, and the tentative parcel map. I think we talked about mitigating the, that traffic with the blinking lights in the crosswalk. Is that a condition we're looking at adding?
Possibly, yes. That's definitely a possibility.
We've got a representative from the city engineering. Do you have any, did you get a chance to review the internal part of that site plan, and do you see any conflicts of traffic, pedestrian flow, et cetera, that you might be uncomfortable with or have suggestions on?
No, it is a unique couple turning movements in there, like the traffic engineer stated. Ultimately, though, it does meet city standards in terms of our drive aisle widths and our backup distances and maneuverability. Our main concerns from Public Works were, one that I kind of brought up, not even our traffic engineer, is just the potential of it, any drive-throughs ever kind of backing out and affecting the public right-of-way. And so that's why, that's why I included that other condition of approval in there. Reading it, I did see potentially some language you may want to add to it, just to make it that when we go through that condition, that you can add another sentence in there that just basically says that it.
Yeah. Which condition of approval?
It was 2.19 on the errata sheet.
The errata sheet, 219.
219, about halfway down where it says, "The city and the property tenant agree to meet to discuss onsite traffic circulation alternatives." I'd like to maybe add in there, "That shall be implemented."
Pretty good.
And then that way, potentially satisfies Commissioner Ruland's concern.
Zach, I have a question. Currently, on this side, on the left side, if we look at the map, on the left side of the intersection, there's a no pedestrian crossing, right?
At the left side of that, the main crosswalk on the intersection out there?
At the Vista Hermosa.
I believe there's only one crosswalk, it's on the right-hand side.
On the right-hand side, okay. And I wonder if the commission would have supported it or added a condition that have the applicant to add a crossing to the left side, because a lot of people, they would, if we have one on the left side, then people only need to cross the street one time instead of twice.
Where?
On the left side of the intersection, pedestrian crossing, yeah.
Oh, across La Pata have a crosswalk on both sides of the intersection?
There's no signal light placed to support it.
There's no signal light.
I mean, there's, it's a signalized intersection. You know, this way, and I think he's correct, that there is only one crosswalk. It was something I would, not being the city's traffic engineer, I think the city's traffic engineer should look into that, if there is going to be any consideration of it.
Exactly. I would, we'd want to look and see what kind of impact that an extra crosswalk would have on Vista Hermosa.
Yeah, you start talking about the timing of all the lights and everything else, and the whole synchronization of those lights.
Unanticipated consequences.
Yeah.
Yeah, when you push that traffic or pedestrian button there to walk across, you're going automatically set to.
Right, I mean, section, there are three crossings on the three, on the three sides. The last one, there's no crossing there, with anticipated more pedestrian activities between sports park and this proposed site. I wonder if we should add one to make it complete.
You're talking about on the?
Right there, yes.
Well, we'd have to know and evaluate what sidewalks are on the other side at La Pata Sports Park, if there's no sidewalk on that side.
There is.
On both sides of the road?
Yes.
I would like to say that that should be considered by the city traffic engineer. So if you do add a condition in there, potentially make it subject to the city engineer's approval.
Yeah. I think that's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind. Okay, so up at the ingress to the drive-through, you see on the left there at the top, there is a stop sign?
Yeah.
So one going out, one with coming in. Would you anticipate a problem if that was to back up, if the stacking was to go just to the edge of that to block the ingress there? Do you see that as a problem for the folks that are circulating in, coming through?
You know, I see your turning radius on there.
Coming here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And to here. So when this backs up, in the event, this is very successful, and you get nothing to turn cars, which happens quite a bit. Where are they going to go? Are they going to go here into this area, or are they going to naturally go in the direction that it was coming in? If this is blocked, what happens to these people?
I think more problematic is the ones coming up off the center one, turning left and blocking that whole road, getting in the queue.
So do you anticipate?
So we better hope there aren't more than 11.
As the flow, folks are missing the turn in. And naturally, they're going to come over here. Oh, yeah, get in over here, because this happens very quickly. If you go there now, you'll see that, I mean, you need to react again quickly. But those, I think, natural flow is going to not landing this way and then in, instead of through here.
So if there's two, if there's a car on the radius right there, your concern is that they wouldn't be able to make the turn in.
Folks cannot come in here, turn in, go back this way to enter this area, they're forced really to go all the way through and out, back up and around, or do some sort of three-point turn.
Or wait. I think that's part of that condition that we're adding, that if there's onsite circulations that start affecting their stuff. But ultimately, a private property owner, and they're our design team, and that business owner's going to want to have somebody potentially out there and doing other alternatives that can help control their flow through their site. Whether it be through cones or have the, I mean, a person with them taking orders a little bit sooner, potentially staged out there. But I'd probably defer more to the design team on their potential solutions there.
Do you see that as a problem, if that was to occur, which could?
If people don't take their turns and enter the lanes at the same time and drive correctly, you know, if people don't, it can be a problem anywhere, in any drive, drive parking lot. So, yeah, I guess it comes down to our common courtesy of letting people in.
Okay, so you don't see a problem there, basically, is what you're saying?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you, Zach.
Okay.
Commissioner Ruland, do you have one more question?
It's not a question, it's, I was going to see if there's interest in potentially two conditions of approval based on what our discussions have been so far, two additional ones. One is with lighting, that we have a condition that properly shields open space and Talega residents, probably just to the satisfaction of the community development director, to give room for flexibility and change over time. I don't think we're going to get anything good or exact up here on the dais tonight with that. But that would help us to protect those areas we found to be sensitive. And the other one would be maybe perhaps a condition of approval, similar one about parking overflow. If parking overflow, if the sports park has, you know, experiences negative parking impact due to this, then again, there's, they'll work with the CDD. Come up with a solution to the satisfaction of the CDD.
I think I can support your lighting issue, you know, for both the tenants and the open space. I find it a stretch as far as to what if, what if the parking lot, condition of private property owner for an impact on the city public parking lot, I don't know if I can support that.
The city can simply cite people.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, true.
So, I mean, I just don't think, I just don't, I think it's a bridge too far.
I'm a little uncomfortable with putting the lighting one on there. They're required by code to have one lumina or whatever at ground level, so there's a certain amount of lighting they got to have. So I think it would just be that we make sure they don't exceed that by any substantial amount. And that could be pretty easily done, because we don't normally protect views, or, I mean, light intrusion, yes, when you've got a piece of property right next to you. But there's nothing close to this site. So I might be uncomfortable with that. That's my personal opinion.
We know the Talega residents are negatively, distant Talega residents are negatively affected by the sports park. And I don't know if this lighting is going to reach that threshold or not, but I think our code, I think, says there's no light trespass on, does it say adjoining property? Would open space be covered by that, or is that only private property?
It shouldn't spill onto other properties. So that would include the open space.
All right, so if there's glare and open space, and we find that that's an issue for some reason, we're covered.
Sure, and the way the condition is currently written, they do need to submit a plan when they're pulling permits. So this would be reviewed at the city planner's discretion, so we could ensure that that's a requirement that is on that plan.
I would appreciate it if the planner put that, the planners, you know, had an eye towards that, and, you know, made sure that open space area and potentially the residents of Talega were protected.
Lighting shielded from open space at the city, you said CDD discretion?
I said CDD or city planner.
Or city planner, very good.
You know, whatever makes sense, yeah.
Very good.
Amy, I think this is a standard condition, is it, about light?
It's a new standard condition.
Is it in the, in the resolution condition of, condition?
Yes, 5.7.
5.7.
Mm-hmm. Page eight.
Okay, so we do have it. So, do you want it to be more specific?
Well, I was worried that, I was worried that because of proximity to open space, you know, that we don't, we might not, our current municipal lighting ordinances don't address light trespass on open space. But planners are going to, are going to look at that. I think this is kind of a new, a new condition, it's a little bit stronger, I think.
You're thinking about those lighting from parking lot?
Lighting from parking lot, lightings that are on the building, security lightings, you know, all lighting.
Are you worrying about the wildlife?
In terms of the open space, I worry about two things. One is the, you know, right, wildlife in the open spaces being negatively affected by the lights. I also think that there might, I don't know if there's going to be an issue, but there might be an issue with the residents of Talega, because we know many of them who are quite a distance from the sports park have a negative, a negative effect from the sports park lighting, which is admittedly very strong.
And up on poles?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't, we don't have that other, some parking lot like.
Commissioners, if I could just, for a moment.
Introduce yourself.
Of course, yes. David Dashar, owner's representative, representing Cadence Capital, and the construction manager. The, I have overall project responsibility and assembled the team that's here. The, I have overall project responsibility and assembled the team that's here. A couple of things. One, the lighting standards are very different in 2018 than they were in 2010 primarily because of Title 24. So one of the benefits of that is that any exterior lighting, whether it's a parking lot light or an exterior building light, is on a motion photometric sensor now so that when there's non-activity at nighttime, it auto dims to 30% of normal capacity and goes to the minimum one candle power that the police department requires, which is significantly less than what you're going to see on the project. That's just a standard due to the energy code. So certainly the center will be open at night, and there will be normal light conditions, but there are going to be a lot of times at night when it artificially dims, or automatically dims by itself. And that'll be for the entire parcel. You know, interested in the life safety issue, certainly with pedestrian safety, we do a lot of infill projects, a lot of complex projects in Los Angeles here and elsewhere. The developers are certainly open and willing to incorporate any life safety measures that don't infringe on, you know, parking, whether it be raised crosswalks, whether it be lighted crosswalk, we're more than happy to do that. If we can invest some money doing that to prevent something like that happen at Ralph's, then.
Yeah, pretty tragic down there.
Yeah, we're more than happy to do that. Look at anything that might, that might mitigate that. And I know Plurish from Blackwell in particular was concerned about the positioning of the buildings. Believe me, we wanted to put the buildings to the back of the property. Target wanted us to, we have a 42-inch water main, a storm drain that runs through that property. Commissioner Perez spoke about the Avenue to Pico project. I happen to be the construction manager for that project as well. In that easement, we severely restricted how we positioned the buildings. We, we went through 32 site plans with the architect, civil engineer. We studied relocating the storm drain, which was unacceptable to Public Works.
The sewer easement, the same, you guys, and electric easement and the fuel tanks.
I realize that the result may have not been optimal in ours, but I would like to mention that we put significant effort and significant design time into trying to do just what you're talking about, and it's just with that huge storm drain there, it makes it very, very difficult, so.
Okay, thank you for touching on that. Can I ask you a quick question?
Go ahead, Commissioner Blackwell.
Is the, did any of your design iterations include a different layout of the buildings?
Oh, my goodness, yes.
That allowed you to avoid encroachment to the easement?
We, Amy Black, the architect, is here to speak to that. I think over the last two years, we've positioned the buildings in every way you could possibly imagine and studied all of the issues, ADA access, traffic flow access, encroachment, how to get trash out of the buildings during the design review. You know, we went to great minutia on all these details. I think that, in answer to your question, yes, we studied all kinds of different things to do. The, the idea of actually going into the hillside, removing that retainer, going farther into the hillside despite the expense, actually using the back of the building as part of the retaining wall for the hillside itself, I mean, I don't think we left a stone unturned. It seemed like every time we did that, another problem, problem. Whether it was traffic flow, whether it was ADA, whether we couldn't get Public Works to sign off on relocating the storm drain. We feel like that we presented what's an optimal solution to all of the challenges of the site. But, you know, again, we're, we're flexible, and we're certainly willing to accept the conditions you've mentioned. The crosswalk going to the sports park, I understand the concern there. In fact, Commissioner, we brought this up, I think, in an earlier meeting that we had for the design review board. And while it may not be optimal for the city in other ways, I don't know to add a crosswalk. Perhaps we would look at relocating the existing to the opposite side. And certainly, we would be willing to absorb the expense of doing that if that benefits the project, to move it to where the ramp is so you don't have to cross twice. This was discussed at great, at great length. So, you know, again, as far as accepting conditions that frankly, in the grand context of the project, don't add significant expense that would optimize in your eyes, we're, we're willing to listen to pretty much anything.
Well, I appreciate you walking us through the rationale behind the placement. So what I heard was definitely was not driven by, you know, the visibility to the street. There was some real engineering challenges to deal with that really drove this design.
Yeah, the storm, the storm drain in particular makes that site really, really challenging. And it's, even relocating it doesn't really solve our problems, even though it was tremendously expensive and Public Works wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah, we start talking about depth issues, there are other utilities that run through there and any kind of other challenges.
That has a lot of value to those that may be concerned about that, so thank you for addressing that.
Okay, I think we've come to now the discretionary sign permit, which is probably, and I apologize to the other applicants, we'll try to move this along for the next items. So we've got the discretionary sign permit, and do we have any comments to start with on those? My comment of concern going, what happened when Target originally did their sign program and the monument on Lapata and Vista Hermosa? And there was a reason it wasn't there at the time. So.
I don't think we need to revisit.
So I think that can be.
I'll be happy to.
Discuss. So who would like to start?
Commissioner Blackwell, your lights on. Thank you, I would. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to talk about sign type four and that corner location. I think that all by itself, it kind of makes sense, the corner of the property like that. But bigger picture, all things considered, we have a massive sign at the hilltop, and that's the Target building itself, the gigantic red bullseye right on the side. We'd love to see a gigantic, you know, bronze backlit, you know, pin-mounted sign, but now we got a red one. And that's what they got, and that's their trademark, and, you know, we all appreciate the value of that. Dropping in this secondary structure at the base of the hill, right in the line of sight, everybody that sees that at the intersection is a very large snub to all the residents in that area that I believe may have been impacted by the, just the size of the structure, you know, the Target building acts to Commissioner Wu's point about the, you know, the building itself and the signage on that building acting as enough signage really underlines the lack of necessity here for this, this other, this new one. Not to mention the, you know, the death by a thousand cuts that we've seen since construction complete on this project, the landscape on that hillside, it's atrocious. And it's nothing like what I think was envisioned when the project was approved. There's maintenance, but it's minimal, and there's been a lot of plant material that's died, not been replaced, it's, you know, it's not well-maintained. It really is, this would just, in my opinion, really add to, to something that's already not that great. Monument, sign type two, nine feet tall, huh? That's more like 15 feet tall. And I think to Commissioner Brown's point, absolute, you know, block for line of sight for those folks that travel frequently on Hermosa at speeds in excess of, you know, 45, 50 miles an hour all day long. For somebody to react with a bag of hamburgers and french fries on their lap, you know, looking forward to eating that on the way to the freeway, that's just an accident just waiting to happen. And that's something I think this is the time to address, the location, the size of it. I'm not opposed to the sign itself. I think it's, you know, designed nicely, it's just the scale of it and the location is inappropriate, in my opinion. And some mitigation to that foundation is certainly a hand, but that needs to be retained to see, even to paint it is just, that's a project, that's just not well-thought-through. I think some well-placed shrubs to block that and kind of soften that a little bit would be a good, a good road to take on that one. Rest of the signage, the addition to the type one, the entry, the existing signage, I think that makes sense. It already appears to be designed to accommodate for future tenants, and I think that's fine. It looks fine. I just don't see the need for the additional corner sign, the extra Target, Target, Target itself, just overkill, not necessary.
Commissioner Ruhl.
Yeah, I feel a little stronger even than Commissioner Blackwell. I, when we do these monument signs, one thing I always come to is this condition that we have, that if a freestanding sign is included in sign application, the design scale or location of the building dictates the use of freestanding signs rather than building mountain signs. And that's a strong word that we have in our findings, is dictates. And I think many of the examples that were shown, those monument signs were placed in front of buildings that were set behind acres of parking lot. I think if you look at the Estrella Shopping Center, where we allowed a couple monument signs, those are far, far back from the street and needed that and given the other restrictions on the signage. All these new buildings are right, you know, are very close to the street, they're visible from the street. I know it, you know, I certainly sympathize that you want to have that signage and maximize the visibility right there at the intersection and up near the end, but I don't, Commissioner Blackwell's comments notwithstanding, I think he had, had great comments on some of the issues with the, with the sign as it was. I, at least this time, I haven't heard from the other commissioners yet, I don't see the necessity, I don't see where the building dictates that we require this kind of monumental, pretty large monument signage. That is another thing about the other examples of the monument signage, they tended to, they tended to, the size of the monuments tended to conform to the size of the copy on there, and these are larger. So I, you know, I have issues with the size, I have issues with, you know, you know, being out in public. I don't have issues with any of the existing signs, the other signs, the internal signs. I don't have a problem with putting the new tenants on the existing monument signs. I think that's certainly fair because they already exist. But sign, that signs two and signs four, I just don't see where they're, you know, I've been trying, I just don't see where they're justified in appropriately advertising the, you know, the building. I don't see where this is going to, I don't see where, where the buildings are suffering from the lack of the signage. Could you get, could there be more customers as a result of the signs? Yeah, maybe so, although that's, we don't really have direct evidence of that. But is, are the buildings going to suffer, are they set too far back to be seen on this main thoroughfare? I don't think that's the case. And as a result, I have, I have trouble supporting either of those two new monument signs. However, the rest of the signs I'm fine with.
Commissioner Ruhl.
A few comments. First, I completely agree with Commissioner Blackwell and the ruling's concern on type, on the type two, this new proposed monument sign. Then the type four, the new monument in the middle of a slope at the intersection of two scenic corridors. They are scenic, they're identified by the city as a major urban corridor and a major recreation corridor. And the face, given the size, given the elevation and the orientation, they're literally in your face, and from that standpoint, you can see three Target logos. I don't think it's needed. I'm not going to support that, period. Type two, I think, I understand that the drive-through needs some visibility for the motors traveling eastward. I think it's too big. It's right next to the sidewalk, again, it's, there's too much impact. The only, the only condition I can support of type two is to reduce it and move it back and let it to be visible only to eastward motorists. I also want to bring this to attention of the commission, that each business has a maximum sign size of 64 square feet. When we look at a pad one, the drive-through building, we have four signs of each elevation. Do we really need them? And then we, then we also have the drive man, you add them up, it's almost a sign proliferation here. My last comment is, as I just asked the city attorney, maybe it's a minor, but it's technically, I think it's important, when we have this two parcels to be split here, if we allow the sign at the corner to advertise for the new, new tenants on another piece, piece of land, and we also, sign type one has a Target logo, legally they own different sides, they own different parcel, that become off-site signs, which is prohibited by the city.
City attorney stepped out for a moment, but.
I'll ask the city attorney one, one more time about the off-site signage issue here. Once we split these parcels into two, we have a situation the city prohibits called billboard or off-site signs. The applicant is proposed to have a sign type one on a new parcel with a Target logo, which on a separate legal parcel. At the same time, the applicant is proposing a monument on the middle of the slope at the intersection of Lapata and Vista Hermosa to advertise for the new tenants on the new parcel. Now that creates that specific situation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it'll depend on the definition of off-site sign in the code. I would doubt this is an off-site sign as there are any number of projects approved pursuant to a site plan permit that are subdivided with, with numerous lots. But I can take a look at the definition briefly and get back to the commission on this.
Mr. Cran.
But it is, it is fairly standard for a product to be subdivided and there not be off-site signs.
Mr. Cran. We did a similar situation when we approved the site for, we're now Sprouts and Home Goods and all it is, two separate owners split, they came together with a common architect, but we have monument signs on either property that advertise a crossway, you know, on side roads and in the front that advertise businesses for both sides. So it's a very similar analogy there.
On the Estrella one, at one end, there's a monument sign, at the other end, there's a monument sign, and they don't advertise the ones that are down on the far end. I mean, at the corner where it's, what is, sign type four, Lapata, they're advertising businesses that are what, 500 feet, 600 feet down the road, which is a pretty long way. So that, that's one thing, but continue. Commissioner Ruhl.
Well, that's, that's all I have. Both, basically, in order for me to support it, I want to get rid of the monument at the intersection of Lapata and Vista Hermosa, and also modify the type two to be visible to eastward motorists only.
Chair Cran.
Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to wade in on this. The monument signs needs to be reduced in size on the west side there and moved up, and they need advertisement of people coming eastbound, and they should be positioned accordingly and out of the line of sight of the westbound traffic. I can, I would support that no monument sign on the corner of Lapata, because this is a gateway. And I think that stands by itself rather than have to come together on an off-site versus addition, which I think we approved a lot of other things in town that we just discussed. I think your point stands on the merits that this is a gateway and an important intersection, and that we, we give their site enough visibility by tenant on the next monument sign up by the, by the signal light. So I'm kind of in agreement with you, Mr. Wu, but I don't think we need to, we can make the finding based on the gateway requirement, and it stands by itself to me. And then the monument sign on the west side needs to be reduced in height and moved up the hill or positioned to give them the advertising they need for the eastbound traffic, and it eliminates the line of sight issue for the westbound. For those, I can make the finding.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak on this?
Chairman. One thing I was going to add, I know Commissioner Wu was asking about the off-site sign, but the way it's defined in the code, it's defined as, means a sign which advertises or directs attention to a person, establishment, merchandise, business, service, event or entertainment which is not located, sold, produced, manufactured, provided, or furnished on the site, parcel, and/or lot where the sign is located. So it makes a differentiation between like a lot and a sign, in a site. In this case, we're, we're looking at. In this case, we're looking at the entire project site, which would include the Target in this case. And, you know, I'm not, I believe the city attorney might concur with that, but.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I see nobody, nobody else in, with their lights on. So we need to go over.
If I may, just real quick, we're.
I'll allow you just for a minute or two.
We would like to still continue this, this issue of the signage if possible, just some mitigations. In the conversation we're having, the potential, by the way, Hany Malak, McKentley Malak Architects, the architect on the project, sorry. We're willing to reduce the height of the, to our sign to seven feet, position it back up the hill in a way that would, would avoid any traffic conflict or any visibility conflict, if that's, if that's, if we can have the leeway during the design process to see exactly where it would be positioned, see where the height of the sign needs to be at, but we would be willing to drop that sign by at least a minimum of two feet and position it up the hill and keep that sign. On the other side, in the conversation with Target, they're willing to even drop the entire bullseye, the red bullseye, and, and just keep the four tenants. It's really important for us to have some sort of an advertisement, some kind of a, a way of knowing that there's other tenants down the road. Not, not seeing any visibility at the intersection is really hard to have, to have tenancy in the shopping center down the road, and that's, that's where we need to have, to have some kind of visibility. So Target is willing to drop the bullseye altogether, definitely would be a bronze, bronze backlit, pin mounted signs, and that would be, you know, again, we can look at the positioning of that sign, exactly where it sits in the hill, and in a way that, that would avoid the, the traffic signalization and all of the other items that are there today. There's a lot of utilities in that, that corner, but we can certainly look at the sign, and I think there was the rendering in the previous, in the previous rendering that we've done, we can take the Target, the bullseye, and just leave the design of the architecture, which blends itself with the rest of the project, and just have the four tenant names. So if that's something that, that would kind of alleviate some of the, the concerns of the multiple bullseyes, if you will, certainly have the bullseye on top of the building.
Now, are there bullseyes on that tower on the, on two sides? One facing Lapada and one facing Vista Hermosa?
If you go to the photograph, the photograph has it. Can you go to the.
Well, I know there's one coming down.
This is a presentation that he had, that Greg has. You have to keep on going on that.
Up to, up to.
No, up, up, up.
Up, right there.
Yeah, right there. Yeah, it's, it's just the one side, right there. If you can see it, it's, it's just facing Vista Hermosa.
Just right here.
Right. And then it's one for the.
There is.
Backwood coming down Lapada.
And this one doesn't really show to the people coming south on Lapada.
We cannot control the content.
That building's done, that was, that's eight years ago.
I'm saying applicant is proposing to drop that Target sign. We don't know, we cannot limit them from.
No, but we can tell them to drop the sign, period. Not the Target, but any sign on that tower, you can, you can make that statement, that he's willing to offer that. Offer that up to get the.
No.
No, off the monument sign?
Not on the store, not on the store.
On the store, just that.
Oh, yeah.
They want to keep that monument sign, they're willing to.
Yeah, that's, that's, we're not talking about that.
Sorry.
I have a question for staff, if I may, about this.
Certainly, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. What, is there a shopping, a name for the shopping center? They don't, we don't have a name. Okay.
Target. I mean, we have the, the one over in Tolega, Tolega Shopping Center. This has now become a shopping center.
I just have a hard time with the, you know, advertisement type content on, on it. I mean, a little bit of, and I think it's already pretty large, but if it was scaled down possibly, I'm just still feeling the same way about anything right there. We've got plenty of advertisement just up the hill on the building itself. There's a lot of, lot of trips in and out of that center, even without the new uses. And it's, and we've got a proliferation to Commissioner Wu's point, we have lots of signage focused, there's going to be no mistake that those uses are there. They've got it on the walls, they've got it on four sides of the drive-through, and then plus the mon, if this goes through with the extra monument sign, they're going to have that as well. I just don't see the need for it.
Okay. For the Commissioners to consider, would the applicant consider pulling the sign permit from this, tonight's hearing? And let us review a new design for the type two, I believe it is. Is that the one on the hillside, on the inside? Type two sign?
Type, type two, and this is the four.
And let Design Review review the signs and go through the normal process. I've kind of warned you ahead of time, this is what was going to probably happen, bringing the signs up, but move along with the project vote.
Okay, and if I may add, if, Steph, if you could work with the applicant and look at the whole, the big picture, the whole, the whole thing, the hillside landscaping, missing trees, what's their way to clean it up and make it more attractive? The whole package coming through could have a completely different effect, right? I mean, so I think that's, it's an important point here, so if we could add, that'd be great, if it ends up going that direction, so.
So if you're willing to table this item.
Say that again?
We can table that discretion of sign permit.
That's what we're talking about.
We're, we're fine with separating the, the sign.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, we're certainly fine with separating the sign. Two, you know, Target's intent is to always have delivered the center and the landscaping. So we're certainly willing to go back and remediate that and bring, Target's willing to bring that up to standard now, not wait for the project to go forward. One comment about the sign, type four. We're willing to adjust size, shape, color, lighting, texture, more or less any condition you want to impose. The issue that I have, and I'm intimately involved with leasing, is that without some visibility for the new tenants on that corner, I can't get anybody to sign any leases. I realize that's not your problem, but every single coffee tenant, Pete's, Starbucks, Dunkin' that's come forward, has made it a condition of the lease that we give them some signage on that corner. They haven't given us a lot of restrictions. What I would like to just put forth that we would like, try to find some compromise that you would find reasonable and tasteful, that, that might be acceptable as a request.
Very good. I know, I for one, think the area needs a project similar to this. I think, you know, it suits the city to have something here. We got to do it tasteful, we want to work with you also. And I think on the one-on-one format at Design Review might be the best place to work that out.
Speaking as a developer.
And I don't know, but the timing is.
Yes.
To get that done, certainly we want to do it as quickly as possible, so you can work on your leases.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, tenants are really demanding, national tenants particularly, the ones we want that are going to stay in credit quality. I would love if every single one of them dropped this requirement.
That's not going to happen.
But that's not going to happen, so we would like to just request that we work towards compromise if we can.
Can you also use a temporary sign to achieve your goal? You don't need a permanent sign. You only need to bring people's attention at the beginning of the sign. And the Target can have some temporary kind of sign perhaps to help you. If you are willing to drop that type of four, you may be able to get it today.
We wouldn't have a project, because I wouldn't sign any leases, unfortunately.
Hey, I would also mention to Target, 10 years ago, what we do now is routinely write in a condition of approval that all landscaping will be maintained. We've added that about a year or two after you guys entered into the city here, so this new tenant will probably have that, that's probably in this condition of use now, but when you came to town in 2010, we didn't do that back then, now we do pretty routinely. So I appreciate you standing up to the architect, the landscaping, but take, bring it up to speed, but keep it there.
Okay. Amy, can you come up to the podium?
Quickly, Commissioner Ruhl.
Yeah, I mean, after hearing the other commissioner speak, I just wanted to put in that theirs, it sounds like there's not a lot of taste for the corner sign, for this one, people are willing to move it around. I'm still, personally, I'm still left with, why is the nature of the building dictating that sign? So that's still an issue that I would have with that sign. I'll also point out that there are, the Tolega Village Shopping Center close by, is one example, doesn't have these kind of big monument signs for that at all. We start to, it starts to feel like we're granting this particular shopping center a privilege that we don't grant other shopping centers. So it sounds like the applicant is willing to come back and, and give it another shot with the monument signs, but I just wanted to make it clear so they kind of know where we all stand, and you can factor that in, and why we stand where we, where we do. You know, but even when it comes back, I think that's something that we're going to have to take a close look at, is, is what, you know, what are we, what are we allowing here that we haven't allowed, you know? So we need to be careful about that. All right, thank you.
Okay. So what would we need to do, this is from Mal, Gabriel, and Amy, to pull the sign item from our resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
There are two resolutions anyway. It is a separate resolution, okay, so we don't need to do that.
There were three actions that were before you tonight. The first was to approve, was for the SEQA exemption. Now, the exemption, you would not need to make the one for the signs. Let me see if I can pull that up here, bear with me.
Now, that's not a resolution, though. There's no resolution for a SEQA.
No.
That's just part of the resolution.
It's just part of it. So when you're reading it into the record, you don't need to say the way that I wrote it here. So when I was making my recommendation, I indicated determine the project is categorically exempt for SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, and we could skip this one. Pursuant to class three, new construction or conversion of small structures. And then your second action would be to adopt the resolution, as indicated here with your rat sheet, and I believe you had a few other minor modifications in, that you wanted to make.
Okay, we can just continue. So do we have a motion on a resolution number PC?
Just one, just one quick accounting item. I don't know if, this is, this new format for our conditions of approval, so I wasn't sure if this was done on purpose or not, but conditions 3.1 and 4.1 are identical. So I don't know if you wanted to remove one of those, or if you meant to repeat it like that in the new format.
One's for the site permit, one's for Derek.
I beg your pardon, one's prior to the issuance of grading, one's prior to the issuance of building permits. So you may, yeah, you may want to have done that. Actually, before grading permits, you only can apply to one, but, all right, so it doesn't matter.
Can we add a conditioning?
Hold on. 3.1 and 4.1 is what, was what I had seen. But that's up to you with the new format, it may be perfectly fine, so.
Okay, so do we have someone who wants to make a motion on resolution, PC 18034? And then once the motion's made, we will look at adding the additional items.
Let me give it a try, but Commissioner Wu, you have another idea?
Well, I'd like to talk about the conditioning first, then once we have a majority or consensus, then someone can make the motion to include all the.
Okay.
Condition. My condition would be add a pedestrian crossing across Avedida Vista Hermosa unless the city engineer doesn't desire it, add or relocate. Or up to civil, city engineers approval, or something like that.
Well, we can do it two ways, we can either do a conditional approval, or, I think it should probably say have the city engineer review and evaluate the appropriateness of an additional or, not crosswalk.
I will say that it's hard a question to answer right now. If it's simply a matter of adding the pedestrian crosswalk or relocating the ones there, it's a fairly simple matter. But I have been involved in these things before, and the city engineer may look at it and rewire a complete reworking of the signalization, a complete signal upgrade, I might be, you know, sticking my foot into a $300,000 bucket without knowing about it. So until I see a design of what the city would want, it's tough for me to commit to that.
Well, that's why I say we wouldn't mandate, but we'd say we'd leave it up to the city engineer to see if it's appropriate or not.
The pedestrian crosswalk, and we just did one of those, four lane, it was about $70,000, I'm fine with that. The problem is when you start reworking these intersections, a lot of times it's a domino effect where you end up regaling the whole thing, and I have no idea what that impact would be, so it's just, it's just tough for us to say. We're certainly willing to consider it, leave it as an open mind.
I, I'm actually concerned about adding it in, because usually with something like that, we have that as a, as a full item that we look at as the traffic committee, and we haven't, we haven't considered at all what the impact might be. So, you know, even leaving it to the traffic engineer and opening it up like that and possibly increasing, significant increase in, increases in cost, I, I, I appreciate the thought, but I think that, I think it might be more than what we're prepared, at least what I'm prepared to do tonight.
Yeah, this is a major thoroughfare for people.
We have a comment from Mal real quickly.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, any, any signal, crosswalk, traffic device has, has to undergo a significant review, including review for whether it's warranted under what's called the MUTCD. If, if, if devices or mitigation measures are implemented that aren't warranted, it could subject the city to significant liability. So it's, it's important, as has been stated, that we tread very cautiously here. I think it's fine to refer the issue to the traffic engineer, but to give him wide discretion, as these things also come back to, as, as has been stated, both the commission and the council for subsequent approval.
Yeah, I think we don't really have the information that would be necessary to make that request at this time.
I was just going to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to be, I, I just have a difficult time trying to support that, because Vista Hermosa itself is one of our major thoroughfares, critical to get people to work to Lapada, in Lapada, to the I-5, and so that signalization alone there has been fairly well thought out, so I, I'm a little, I'm a little, I think it's a nice view, but I think we probably should have brought that up at Design Review, or should have been brought up by engineering and design management team long ago. I think we move with that very, very cautiously. I agree with the city, assistant city attorney's suggestion on that, that we, we tread lightly here.
Very good, okay. So we do have a couple of conditions of approval that we discussed, so we have a motion, and then we can read through the ones everybody's written down.
Well, we want to make a motion, we determined that the project is category exempt from SEQA pursuant to state's SEQA guidelines, section 15311A, class 11 accessory structures, and 15303, class three, new construction or conversion of small structures.
Just 303.
And.
Yeah, 303.
We have a motion to make that determination, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes six, zero.
Opposed?
Passes six, zero.
Okay. Now, number two, adopt resolution, PC 18034, approving site plan permit 17-400, architectural permit 17403, conditional use permit 17404, tentative parcel map 17405 with a rat sheet modifications and conditions that are, the rat sheet, right?
Yes, we had the one from engineering who wanted us to, city and property attention that shall be implemented on.
218?
On 219, right? 218? Yes. And 219. And the other, all the rest of the sheet as presented. And additionally, what other conditions? We had one at least to direct the city by Commissioner Ruhl and to make sure that they kept an eye on the light requirements.
I don't know if we need that, sorry. I don't know that we need that as a condition, that's a, a direction to staff. If staff agrees, that's fine with me.
So in that, meet title 24 requirements. No, I certainly do.
They already, they already do, right? That's, that's already.
Well, they have to, yeah, absolutely.
Exactly.
Okay, so no, no other conditions then? Commissioner Wu, do you have a condition?
No.
No.
Okay.
I second.
We have a second by, a motion by Brown, second by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Passes 6-0. Congratulations, and then
Wait a minute, we're not done yet.
No, we have to do
Adopt, we're gonna now table, is that correct, Amy? Just table, or defer to a date certain?
Well, continue. If we can get a date, definite date, we can continue.
Number three, the number 35, the design package, if we want to defer it.
Well, can we get them to
Do we continue it? Do you want to?
Number 35, or the, just the discretionary sign permit in total?
I don't think we want a date certain, because it has to go through designer So just table it.
We're not gonna adopt PC 18035, we're gonna continue it?
Table.
Table?
Table, then we'll have to re-advertise it for a future date.
When it's ready. All right.
If the applicant can make that type two, small enough, backward enough, and they believe that's good enough to bring back directly, they can just come back to the commission.
Sometimes when you want it real bad, that's the way you get it real bad, and I don't like to go that way.
It's their choice, design reviews is, is not an approving body, but it's, I think it would probably be better for them if they went through design review first.
The whole thing is
So I have my, I can motion, we table, correct, resolution PC 18035, discretionary sign permit 18215 for the target commercial retail site.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Rulon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Passes 6-0.
Did we get that right?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And thank you to the people who've been waiting for the next item.
So you're about
And, does anybody want to take a, we're gonna take a five-minute break for, just to stretch out the suspense.
That is a good, good solid three.
It's gotta be a loan, that.
Now, let's move on to the next one.
I'm like, hour ago.
Yeah, I signed it.
Yeah.
I'm like, oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 Alcohol service is an ancillary use to that. It supports that, that vision for the district. In terms of the compatibility of the use with adjacent properties, there are several reasons we think that this finding could be met. The use would be indoors for alcohol service. There's conditions of approval to maintain health, safety, and welfare. The hours of operation are comparable to restaurants in the area. And we've spoken with the Sheriff's Department and Code Enforcement. They have determined that the use could operate compatibly with adjacent properties if they follow the rules and the conditions of approval. So that concludes my presentation.
Do I have any questions for staff? Commissioner Rowland?
Yeah, condition of approval 12. I just didn't quite understand. It seems to be saying that condition of approval 3 has to be completed. And then, and I just, could you clarify a little bit the relationship between those two conditions?
Sure, let me take a look here. Said condition 12?
That's the older resolution.
Okay, so condition 12, what that's all about is, let me give you a date here out of the report. So in, so, okay, in 1997, the city approved outdoor dining on the sidewalk. And our municipal code requires the recordation of a hold harmless agreement. And I put this condition in here to get confirmation from the applicant that an agreement was recorded to the property, that they would show evidence of whether that condition in the municipal code was met. If it wasn't recorded, then they would update the property to have the agreement that's required by the municipal code. So this is like a documentation type of condition, just to make sure that everything is done properly on the site according to the municipal code. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess it sounds like that they were supposed to have an agreement in place, and no one can find the agreement. And so this is gonna, this is gonna assure that they have the agreement in order to get this new permit? Okay. One other thing, it's not a question, but it appears we've got an unnumbered condition. The condition after, you go, there's a condition 13, and then another new paragraph that's unnumbered, and then a condition 14. At the bottom of page two of the conditions. I didn't know if that should be numbered, 16 or something.
Sure, we can make that condition 16.
Didn't know if it was important or not, but I thought I'd put it up.
At the bottom, just so we keep all the numbers the same.
Yeah, exactly. All right.
Any questions for staff?
I just have a point of order. Just like to record to reflect that I was recused from the first agenda item, and I'm now back here.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Okay, would the applicant?
I do rule that, if I may.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Thank you. So, Chris, condition 12, if we could just take a look at the language. Just, it's very clear, within two months of the approval date, the owner or applicant shall demonstrate that it goes on later on to give the owner six months if they cannot demonstrate the existence of the agreement as being recorded from a previous resolution that was never done. Do you think we can massage that a little, so it's a little more, we give them two months to do it, or they just simply need to do it before they get this entitlement? You know, before, you know, before they can get their permits, basically. They need to take care of that, clean up that business they were supposed to do previously, rather than give them two months after the fact? Or six months?
So, yeah, the way that this condition's set up is they have six months if an agreement wasn't done. So if, if the commission wants to speed that up, we can make it four months?
Yeah, how many years has it been? Ninety-seven, so they've had 11 years to 20, sorry.
Long night.
Yeah, so, okay, my point being, it's been a really long time. So I think they should take care of that quickly. That's just my suggestion.
So can I suggest one month for them to verify that it's been recorded, and three months to get one completed?
That would be reasonable, absolutely.
I'd have supported that, but I, I want to ask the city attorney, if the city wants indemnification or hold harmless things, we can simply sign an agreement. Why this agreement needs to go into county, county office of record? This is not against that, that project or the piece of land.
Yeah, I have to review this resolution from back in 97 to understand what the intent of the condition was. The reality is a condition was imposed, and, and it either wasn't performed, or we need to have evidence of it being performed. I don't know exactly why this was, was imposed, but it, but it was. So it has to be complied with.
So our municipal code to have outdoor dining in the public property requires this agreement. So that is a requirement in the municipal code. This condition is just to make sure that that municipal code requirement is complied with. So they, I cite the old resolution only for the purposes of keeping a paper trail. And that resolution allowed them to have the outdoor dining in the public property. So that's...
Which they've gone on and done without the agreement, so.
I'd say, yeah, go get it down before, before we issue the permit.
I agree, absolutely. I mean, 30 days is generous.
Or you could say prior to...
Get something recorded that...
Or you could say prior to the service of alcohol, they need to have it done.
Well, they're already permitted for beer and wine, right?
No, they do not.
Yeah, no alcohol at all?
No.
Okay, got it.
Sorry.
Coffee.
Okay. Anyone have any other comments on, on this?
My only. My only comment, real quick, was that we don't need to assume that they don't have an agreement. They, it's just, we need them to, to show that it exists right now. So let's not assume that it's been 21 years operating without an agreement. I'd prefer to assume that the agreement just needs to be found and submitted. And if not, I assume that these are perfunctory. So, and the applicant wouldn't have any problem executing an agreement rapidly?
Okay, would the applicant like to make any comments?
Thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Mark McGuire, representing the applicant, which is Tower Zero LLC is the name of the entity. It's John McKinley, who I, who, as you know, I represent on some other issues. He owns a number of parcels in the Pier Bowl core area, including this parcel. He wasn't the restaurant, restaurant person that, you know, did the cafe way back then, and then it was Pizza Plus, and then it was actually La Gillette, starting in 2004, although it wasn't his restaurant, it was a tenant. And then, the, over the last few years, he's become the tenant. So on the question of whether there is an agreement or not, that's actually a real question. We'll either track down that original agreement for when that cafe got the permit for a sidewalk, you know, for the chairs outside, or we'll do the standard agreement. The main thing, I think, that's, that's needed for that is the indemnification provision and the commitment to stay within your five feet. You know, we're happy to do that if, if there, if that agreement doesn't exist somewhere. So we'll try to track it down quickly, and we'll immediately enter into that agreement. We have no problem with that.
And you've reviewed the conditions and are comfortable with them?
Yeah, I've reviewed the conditions. I do want to say again, I, I know it's late, but I'm happy to do this for La Gillette. It's one of my favorite places in town, and I think the restaurants only continue to be great while John's owned it, run it the last few years. He's been looking forward to trying to get alcohol at this little cafe. And he put his name in the raffle. You know, there's a lottery system, and he got one. And so we're excited about it. I think it will add an additional opportunity in that Pier Bowl core area. He has the Little Seahorse Inn, and he has a number of STU's. He knows that his visitors are always looking for something to do in the evening and to be able to have an after-dinner drink and dessert, some small plates. Be a nice amenity, a nice addition to the, to the Pier Bowl. So if there aren't any questions, I'll, if there are any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, thank you very much for your consideration.
Any questions for the applicant? I see none, so we will close the presentation, open it to public comment. Mark gave me a card, but we'll give that back to Eileen. Here you go. And we'll close for public comment and open for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
One very minor misspelling here. On the condition 12, the last, the line next to the second, above the last line, says identification, it should be indemnification, I believe. City Attorney Review of Indemnification Agreement.
Gonna rework that condition anyway, right?
Oh, okay.
So, time to make the change.
On 12?
Oh, sorry. That's page two of the report. It's, yeah, it's the last sentence of condition 12, right before agreement. Identification should be indemnification.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number PC 18037, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit 17362 La Gillette alcohol service to allow restaurant service of a full range of alcoholic beverages for indoor consumption on a site located at 612 Avenue of Victoria Suite D and E with the following changes to page two of the conditions of approval. The first change is the paragraph immediately underneath paragraph, or condition number 13 shall have the number 16 added to that. And for condition number 12, it'll be within 30 days of the approval date, the owner or applicant shall demonstrate condition of approval number three was completed. And we will then skip down to, if there is no evidence, an agreement was executed, the applicant shall execute an agreement acceptable to the city attorney within 30 days of the approval date. The applicant shall pay expenses related to city attorney review of the indemnification, not identification, agreement.
Second, we'll see for determination. We'll do that, too.
That's part of the, that's part of the resolution.
It's in the recitation.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Tally. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Commissioner Kozinski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No opposed, so it passes 6-0-0? 7-0-0, we've got the whole crowd here now. Thank you for the correction. Okay, the next item is item 8C, zoning amendment. Amy Stonich is presenting.
All right, are you ready? Good evening, Chair, and members of the Commission. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief presentation on the city's draft ordinance for accessory dwelling units. Now, you'll remember, we did a study session previously where we explained that accessory dwelling units are seen by the state as a valuable means to provide affordable housing in California. Recent amendments from state legislature went into effect on January 1st, 2017, and minor amendments have been made since then. The city may adopt an ordinance to designate areas where ADUs are permitted and can establish limited development standards. However, if no ordinance is adopted, then the city must use the state code, which we are subject to at this time. Since the implementation in 2017, the city's seen applications for just about a dozen ADUs in San Clemente. This represents a small portion of our population. Did I go backwards? Okay. What exactly is an ADU? An ADU is a secondary dwelling unit with complete independent living facilities for one or more persons. ADUs generally, generally take three forms. So they might be detached, let's see here. The unit is separated from the primary structure. Attached. The unit is attached to the primary structure or repurposed living space. So this is living area within the primary residence that is converted into an independent living unit. So this, the ADU law states that ADUs must be allowed in the residential zones that allow single-family residential uses. But the ADU law does allow a city to limit them based on criteria such as adequacy of water and sewer services and the impact of ADUs on traffic flow and public safety. So at the direction of the council, we had prepared a staff analysis to identify areas that might suffer adverse traffic impacts due to ADUs. Ultimately, the analysis concluded that the development of ADUs would not cause significant adverse traffic impacts. This was also reviewed by our Public Works Traffic Engineer, and they concurred with the report. So we've drafted the ADU ordinance to allow them in residentially-zoned properties which contain one detached, single-family dwelling. The zones would include residential very low, low, medium, low, sorry, medium, high, and some of the mixed-use zones. Ultimately, the single-family dwelling and the ADU cannot exceed the density for the lot and will be limited to 50% lot coverage. The ordinance has been drafted to ensure that attached and detached ADUs are built within the existing building envelope that would be applicable in the most restrictive development standards to the single-family dwelling. The height can't, cannot exceed that of the primary dwelling. Additionally, a detached ADU cannot exceed 15 feet within 20 feet of another residentially-zoned property. This will ensure the proper setback to the second story, so it's not peering into a neighboring residence. Garages can be converted, but there are some limitations on setbacks when an addition is done above a garage. The setbacks have been established based on restrictive setbacks for any residentially-zoned property. Keep in mind that repurposed living space is always subject to the same setbacks as the house, because you're essentially taking the house and using it to add an ADU. However, an attached or detached ADU must be at least 20 feet from the front property line and not closer than the living area of the primary dwelling, 10 feet from a side property line, 10 feet from a rear property line, or 20 feet from a rear property line for a through lot, 5 feet from any alley, 25 feet from any coastal bluff, coastal canyon, inland canyon, or 10 feet from open space zone. Unit size. The draft ordinance includes amendments to allow a maximum unit size of 1,200 square feet for detached ADUs. And detached ADUs may be 1,200 square feet or 50% of the living area. We'll not be permitting junior ADUs, and we have included a minimum size for an ADU of at least 150 feet for an efficiency unit or 300 feet above that. Efficiency units are defined by state law. Design standards. The draft ordinance requires that the, an ADU be the same as a primary dwelling in its use of materials and colors. Other review requirements include a separate entrance, not visible from public right-of-way, minimum interior dimensions, windows with no direct line of sight to adjoining properties, and adopted requirements for properties on historic register. We will also process these applications within 120 days.
Is that a state requirement?
That is. 120. If we're lucky, it stays at 120. They were proposing a shorter, a quicker timeline. So parking, as is consistent with state law, the draft ordinance only requires one parking space for an ADU. These can be allowed either covered or uncovered in a setback area or as tandem parking. However, this does not apply to the portion of the city represented here in white, where the state law prohibits us from requiring any parking. Qualified transit stops, highlighted in purple here, show the half-mile radius around them. The blue areas are the single-family residential zones.
These purple dots are, those are bus stops, or those are what are?
Those are bus stops.
Posted bus stop, whether there's bus service provided there or not?
They are bus stops with a, that are sanctioned by the city, yes. Including the Lyft service.
So you include the Lyft?
Yes.
Not necessarily, there's a bus service that goes to that stop anymore, but just if there's Lyft provided, then...
Right, yes, when...
And the ordinance requires that?
The SC rides, in fact, we've written that into the code.
And the ordinance, the state ordinance is required of that to be considered?
No, they leave it up to our interpretation. And here, we've interpreted it similar, the same as our general plan. And we've, and Carl may even be able to expand on this some more. But we've also included the SC rides because they replaced the bus stops and can be responsive within 15 minutes.
Run by us one more time what's in our general plan as far as these bus stops? You just, because someone were disestablished for it by OCTA, so... I guess I'm questioning, maybe we're over-generous in our parking study, or what are we doing here?
I'm trying to think, it's late. I think part of why we took this approach in this analysis is because we were relying on these bus stops for other parts of our general plan, like related to mobility and providing access for people to the city. And so if we, if we didn't, if we sort of took this approach that we're, we're not going to look at transit, and we're going to say, oh, we don't have adequate transit, it would seem disingenuous in a way compared to the, the other areas of the, the general plan that we kind of used this to identify that we have transit and that we provide this service. And, and we went out and, and got the Lyft service to keep the bus routes, in a way, to provide that service to people. So it aligns with what the state is saying, is if you have transit available, they don't want parking to be required. And all the other cities are grappling with the same thing. Other jurisdictions that I've been at, we had to deal with the same situation. So with our draft ordinance.
So we've identified bus, rail, and SC rides.
Yeah, so the, but the rail stops are also included as well, so.
Sorry, I thought, I thought these assumptions made the whole area, cover, area coverage over-generous in a way. I was kind of astounded that we had this much coverage available in the city. Not that I rely on it, but it seemed to me that there is more transportation provided than I knew was available. Thank you.
So deed restriction. The ordinance also requires the property owner to record a deed restriction to ensure that the owner occupies either the primary dwelling or the ADU and to prevent the unit from being sold separately from the primary residence. It also restricts ADUs as long-term rentals, except in those areas that are already designated for short-term rentals.
Commissioner Tally?
Did you say that it prohibits them from being long-term rentals?
No.
Just short, okay, I thought I heard long-term.
It would restrict ADUs as long-term, except in those areas that are already designated for short-term.
Okay. And again, so say there's a primary dwelling and then a garage with a partial conversion. They put a sink and a kitchen, turned, and they want an ADU permit now. If the owner does not occupy the primary unit, what does the state say about that?
They have to, as part of the permit process, they would need to occupy one or the other, either the primary or the ADU.
Is that state law?
No, that's what we would be requiring. We are allowed to, we are allowed to require that.
Okay, thank you.
So in conclusion, the city has historically regulated ADUs. We call them second residential units. Now, the ADU law limits how cities regulate ADUs, including parking requirements, development standards, and the permit entitlement process, which needs to be ministerial. However, based on what we've seen, there's only a handful that are built each year. And with the changes we're able to implement, we anticipate that ADUs will need, will be a positive way to address affordable housing and meet our regional housing needs. We look forward to your feedback on this ordinance and recommendation to City Council.
Amy, for, for the, about a dozen application we already processed, where are they located?
They have been all throughout the city that we've seen them. I, I would try to give an example, area, if they were, if they were in a certain area, but they haven't been. They've been, I've seen garage conversions, I've seen additions that have been done, whether it's going to a second story or whether it's within the existing house.
Geographically, is there a pattern?
No, there's, there hasn't been. We've also had them in the mixed-use area, and I think it gave an example of that one last time.
Thanks.
And I, I wasn't at the study session, but you said you'd require one, in some cases, one parking space for the additional unit.
Right.
And that can be in the setback area? It does not have to be behind the setback, correct?
Right, it can be within the setback.
In the driveway?
It could be on the driveway.
Okay, we're good.
So if you are within the areas that are white, you would have to require, you would have to provide a parking space for the ADU. And if the ADU were to go into the garage, you could provide that parking in other ways as well. That could be on the garage, or, excuse me, on the driveway.
Who can live without a garage to store their stuff in?
So if I can just clarify in my mind what's going on in higher-density areas with this. So if I, if you're in like residential medium, residential high, and it's a single-family home, then the ADU applies, just as you've been talking. So on that same lot, instead of a single-family home, what if there's like a duplex or a triplex?
They don't qualify.
They don't qualify.
Correct.
So they're, they simply can't have an ADU? Is there like a different path for them if they want to convert a garage or something?
Sounds like if they had a duplex already, they've already got their second unit, but they wouldn't be qualifying for an ADU.
Not if you only own one of the units in the duplex, so.
Yeah, so the requirement, it's a good question, because we did clarify that you can only have it on a lot that allows a resident, a single-family residential, but it has to be a detached, single-family residential dwelling, either on or proposed with the ADU.
Okay.
So either exists or will be built with.
But if you don't have a single-family home on that lot?
You don't get an ADU.
Okay.
Right.
Clarification on, run that by the statement you made before about the relationship between these ADUs and this ordinance and our STU ordinance. Because I want to make sure that we overpack some of the areas where STU's are, from it in the medium and high areas. So run that trapline for me one more time.
Sure, so these need to be rented long-term only. The exception would be if you already have an STU permit, and you are allowed to have a, a short-term rental, then you could do it.
Maybe I'm, it's late, and I'm not quite...
So for example, so Commissioner Brown, so for example, if you had a home on a lot that was already an STU, and then you built another unit that's an ADU, you can keep the main house as your STU, and, and then the owner could live in the ADU?
But the owner has to live in the ADU, then?
Correct, that's what we're requiring, because we have that ability to require that.
That's the way we're going to limit it, the owner will still be on it.
Yeah, that's a, as we were talking about with Commissioner Blackwell, an allowance that we have that we can do.
That's a very keen finding, and I appreciate that.
Yes, and a deed restriction that would ensure that that's how it...
My only other concern here is this particular map again. I'm, that's an awful lot of our city where you don't need to provide parking because of our generous assumption on Lyft and all that. There's a lot of area down in the coastal areas where we're going to have ADUs. We don't have, we're not required to have parking because of that assumption. And that's going to really choke these neighborhoods up, I think. That's where I'm, the only concern I have right now. Otherwise, I think you have a great ordinance other than the assumption of this public transit distance.
So remember, we, we made this because we wanted to be consistent with our prior assumptions. So we get relief by having these stops, but then to say, and you can't have your cake and eat it too by then saying, no, we don't want to recognize them in it, when they apply to ADUs. We only want to recognize them when they apply to the benefits that we receive from the stops.
Right, we, we're relying on the Lyft as part of our housing element, you know, to make sure that we're providing the service to people in the city and...
Because medium and low are forced housing.
Yeah, so if, if then, on the other hand... Yeah, so if, if then on the other hand, we turn around and say, well, yeah, but it's not good enough to qualify for this, the state's going to kind of look at us cross-eyed like, wait a minute, it won't make sense to them. They're pushing for affordable housing for everyone, and this is, we've already kind of made our bed. This is, you know, we said, this is what we're, you know, we're going to push for this Lyft, and we put it in, so.
Whereas our housing, okay.
Yeah, so.
Carl, I have a quick question. So it has to be owner-occupied to get the permit to build the ADU, right?
The owner just needs to sign an agreement that they're going to occupy one of them.
Is that also a deed restriction?
It's a deed restriction, and you could live in either one.
Okay, but the subsequent owner doesn't have to live in that, on that property, right?
It's a deed restriction, it runs with the land.
What happens if they don't?
Just as if they were in violation of any other deed restriction.
Code compliance, I previously worked at a jurisdiction with the same thing, and we had, code compliance would follow up on complaints.
Let's follow that one for just a second, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead, Commissioner Tally.
So what happens if you find that out? I mean, what's the, what's the penalty?
So code enforcement...
Let's say that they, they get the permit, they build it, and let's just say they sell it, and then it's a, you know, long-term rental, okay? Both units are long-term rentals, what happens?
So typically, we're complaint-based response. So we receive, receive a complaint, code enforcement would initiate a code enforcement case, look into the, whether that is a valid complaint and a violation, and they would then cite them and continue to do so until they complied.
The site's what, $100, $200 fine times?
It increases each time.
Is it 500?
Yeah, I mean, that's, but we have code staff.
Is there eviction notices potentially in the code, or what do we have here, what's?
Not eviction, but it...
Some guy just decides to pay the fine for the next three years and he's okay with that?
They are misdemeanor fines that can be held up. Ultimately, those fees can be put on to their, the tax, they're lean, yes.
Eventually be a lien, yeah, so.
It's not very well enforceable, is what it comes down to.
It's a challenge, but that's why we have...
Chair and Commissioners, there are two, this is all correct. There are, there are two ways generally that a property owner could violate this, right? One is they don't live in the residence and it's still an ADU, okay? If they do that, then we can simply pull their permit and not allow them to have an ADU there anymore. The other way is, I think as you were stating, they sell the ADU as a long-term residence or a long-term rental or something like that, they don't live there. With a deed restriction, we can sue them, which has a lot more teeth than, than just your typical admin fines. But we have the ability to go after them and sue them.
Until the state, until the state changes that component?
That's, I mean, what we're seeing here, and this is to Commissioner Brown's point, is the state really wants us to do this, and they will continue to tie our hands tighter and tighter and tighter. But as of now, with the deed restriction, we do have the ability to go after them in court if they violate.
Okay, we can take possession of the property, victim of the property, or? What court actions do we, what do you as an assistant attorney take?
Potentially eviction, leaving the property, I'd have to, I'd have to go and, you know, and then look at the Rudder Guide to understand what the remedies would be, but, but with a deed restriction, we can go after them in court for real property violations, what those remedies are, I'd have to go and research that.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Commissioner Wu?
Hey, Amy, I want to go over with you, I have a lot of questions for the ordinance. And so I keep most, I keep comments for deliberations, I'm going to ask you a few questions. If you go to page two, section B1, it says that the ADU is deemed an accessory use or accessory building. Are you talking about detached ADU only?
When you said page two of the report, I'm sorry.
B1, ADU is deemed an accessory use or accessory building.
Are you talking about attachment or what?
It's the ordinance itself.
Okay.
In the...
Attachment one?
Oh, yes, attachment one, I'm sorry.
I'm with you.
So if it's repurposed or attached, it's accessory use. If it's detached, it's accessory building, is that understanding correct?
So in letter B, page two, effective conforming accessory dwelling unit? Is that, that what we're looking at?
No, I'm looking at attachment one. Yeah, effect, effective conforming, yes, B1.
B1, so it's deemed an accessory use or an accessory building, and is not considered to exceed the allowable density for the lot on which it is located, yes?
So a detached ADU would be considered accessory building?
It is.
But in your proposed, other, other limits such as building height and a setback?
No, it's different.
It's different?
Yes. So...
They're not accessory building anymore?
It's not, it's an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
It has a definition all of its own and its own requirements. So I know what you mean, where the accessory building might be allowed to be on a property line, however, ADUs were setting a separate setback, height limit, et cetera.
Okay. And then also, if we go to page five, C4, toward the end of it, it says, in case of ladder, ladder means... This is about a sprinkler. The new addition must comply with the current building and fire code regardless of whether the rest of the primary dwelling fully complies with the current requirements. My understanding of the state regulation, it's also in your educational materials in the attachment, as long as the primary residence is not required to have fire sprinkler system, you cannot ask the ADU to be equipped with a fire sprinkler system.
Yes, there is, that is true. The way that this reads, when it says in the case of ladder, it's referring to a detached primary dwelling. There are also specific adopted codes in the city of San Clemente where the building code adopted that if we, if there is a second-story addition, then that needs to be sprinkled. It applies whether it is an ADU or not, and we've had a case like that that we've looked at.
Such as over a garage?
Such as over, it's a second-story addition, yes, that exceeds 500 square feet.
So if it's already covering that portion, then it seems, it seems that this is unnecessary.
This is a reiteration of, based on state law.
Because on the, without knowing what you just said before, what you just said, the city also revised the other part of the municipal code to require full sprinkler system in any residence, as long as they have ADU. Then if we just look at this alone, it would be in violation of state regulation.
So C2 addresses the fire sprinklers for the primary dwelling, and if the building code requires a second-story addition to the primary dwelling that it, to have sprinklers, then it must have sprinklers. Four is both building and fire code, which that first one doesn't typically address the fire code necessarily.
But the state code basically says you have to decide whether the primary residence needs the fire full sprinkler system first.
So that comes from a specific section of the state code that I could pull up.
Is legal vetted that?
Yes, this is vetted.
This seems like a legal question.
There are attorneys in my office who specialize in the ADU legislation, and they have worked extensively with Amy on this ordinance.
Do you consider that a proper?
I, this is, this is proper, yes, it is a reiteration of other requirements in the code. But when somebody is applying for an ADU, they're likely going to look at the ADU ordinance and not go digging through the entire code. It makes sense to reiterate standards that would apply to their ADU within the ADU ordinance, even though it may be superfluous to other provisions in the code.
Can I answer your question?
Does that answer Commissioner Wu's question?
Does that answer yours?
We can talk about later.
Oh, no, let's get it done.
Later.
Let's avoid as many laters as we can.
I continue my question.
It is later.
Page, page eight, page eight about, about access. Windows and doors of ADU may not have a direct line of sight to adjoining residential property. I wonder how that's possible, if someone built an ADU on the second floor, they're going to look out and they see the neighbor, and the neighbor can see them. And fence is not tall enough, landscaping, unless you erected very tall Italian cypress tree or Austin cypress tree, otherwise... How do you, how do you, private glass, are you asking them to put private glasses on all sides of the ADU? How can that, how does that work?
So there, we were asked to put together a list that might help buffer neighbors to also include architectural review requirements, and in doing so, this was one that has been used in other cities. It does allow for some discretion if fencing, it doesn't specify that it needs to be a six-foot fence, but that might be something that's sufficient for, it allows for some discretion in implementing as long as they meet some of these requirements, fencing, landscaping, something to buffer that.
Okay, okay, on number seven, the next item, our historic structure, we talked about during the study session, it says, must comply with all applicable ministerial requirements imposed by the Secretary of Interior. Are there any, and what are they?
So remember, this only applies to the one property.
Yes.
And the requirements are pretty extensive. They have a list both of requirements and of design guidelines, so only the requirements would be, that are applicable would be those that are objective rather than subjective as well.
Okay. Back up to number five, the interior horizontal dimensions of ADU must be at least 10 feet wide in every direction with a minimum interior wall height of seven feet. Minimum interior wall height of seven feet, what is the purpose of this requirement here?
I can answer that one for you. That's if it's up in an attic, and you have a sloping ceiling, then no walls should be less than seven foot high. Because you can't have a room with a seven-foot ceiling, for a bedroom, I don't believe, but in a sloping attic point, so they don't want you taking it down to the four-foot edge of the roof going down. They want a seven-foot, seven-foot wall.
They can still have the little wall, but not count it as a floor space.
It can be storage.
Storage, right.
Yeah, it's not habitable, though.
That's all right, it's not habitable, but...
I mean, we have that in the regular code as well, this isn't unique to additional dwelling units.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Tally?
We're, we're being required to do this by state law.
Correct.
And?
Well, yeah.
Yes.
If we don't, then there's...
This is in effect.
Trump's, correct.
Right, we can't discuss what will happen if, yeah, there'll be something to pay. To that, to that point, and echoing Commissioner Brown's earlier statement on the, on the parking, it appears to me that it's the public policy of the legislature, or the state, I guess I should say, to make it so that this is, we, we cannot deny these ADUs based upon many of the criteria that would have been used to keep the density of housing where it was.
Correct.
Correct, I mean, Counselor, correct?
Right.
So even though we find it difficult, and we find it troublesome, especially down in some of the areas, down in the coastal zone where parking is already the premium, that is exactly what the state wants, and we have no choice on that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just, in the essence of time, I know we, we may not like it, but we kind of have to do it.
And just a, just a note, this is about as strict an ADU ordinance as you're going to see in the state. We've, we've, knowing what San Clemente looks like and wants to look like, we've tried our hardest within the bounds that have been set for us by the legislature to draft an ordinance that, that looks and feels like San Clemente, knowing that we can't go too far. But this goes about as far as we can go.
And that was my last question, was restrictive is not the right word, but, but we have attempted to utilize every aspect of the, of the law that's been passed in the state to maintain the integrity of San Clemente, and there's really no wiggle room for us up here on the dais to, to parse this ordinance.
I'm always wary of saying that legislative bodies can't exercise their full discretion. This is when we have to be very cautious because of what the legislature has dictated.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Thank you, yeah, just a quick question, so permit procedures, street criteria, ADU permit, a building permit, recognition of that deed restriction? The building permit's still valid because we still have to meet all the building codes, correct?
Correct.
So it's not like they're just going to go and get one quick over the counter PAP, there's going to be review inspections, the whole bit.
Correct.
So, you know, with openings, accessibility, so ADU would be subject to accessibility requirements as well?
Correct, yes.
Single-family residences and duplexes are...
Not for a single-family residence, but...
But the ADU would be, or not?
No, not the residence.
ADA doesn't apply.
Well, actually, quite, I know my neighbor is applying for a ADU. I think it's been permitted, and we both have sidewalks that aren't compliant with the ADA requirement, and so the city as part of her ADU is making her replace the sidewalk.
In front of the house.
In front of the house.
Should drive apron?
They have to have the...
The drive apron?
Yeah, yeah, the drive apron, so ADA is...
But it's not to the, not to the unit itself.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I, no, Amy, I think you've done a good job, we've pushed the envelope to her between you and BBK and everybody else. Yeah, my only concern was about the parking, you clarified that, we can't, no free lunch here with our housing element. God knows, we went through that four times before you two got here. That was an exercise in practice bleeding, so we don't need to go any further than that. So I, I think we, I'm ready to support it and make a motion whenever everybody else says.
Yeah, it looks like we have two items we have to do, is one is the CEQA, and then the recommendation is separate?
Yes, we should probably, probably do that, go through the whole process. We'll close, staff report, open public comment, seen on, open discussion, discussion is complete.
I have more to say about it.
I'm sure you do.
Commissioner Wu?
Parking, I echo the staff's recommendation, because if you don't consider those SD rides a public transit, they are emerging to sheltering, code is in danger. Cannot, you cannot have your lunch and eat it again, you cannot have it both ways. I think we already go, we already go too far here to restrict ADUs, because the setback, if we... if we look at a typical lot, they are 40 feet wide in southwest San Clemente, 40 feet by 100. We asked, Amy, just by the way, I like your proposed ordinance on this sheet, essentially treat ADU as accessory structures when it's detached, and the primary, part of a primary residence when it's attached. But now we're putting all the extra height limit and the setback to ADU, as if ADU is a very undesirable thing, even comparing to other accessory structures like a storage shed. And consider a lot, a narrow lot with 40 feet wide, where you want 10 feet from the side of your, each side property line, you have a middle 20 feet to have your ADU. How can, how can you make it work? It's not feasible, not practical. I cannot support it.
I'll make one comment, that you also can encroach on your neighbor.
It's not encroaching the neighbor.
If you go on the property line, you certainly are.
Commissioner, Chair Randall, I think.
Commissioner Brown, just for a second, go ahead.
I thought there's, there's parts of the ordinance, and Amy, or, correct me wrong, because of down in southwest, where an existing structure, if it's in grandfather under a certain setback, you can continue to use that. In other words, in southwest, if the.
We've done that before.
If the, I mean, I think it's in your ordinance, I think.
Yes.
The garage in southwest passed the 50 percent line, when they were originally built, were allowed a zero lot line. In fact, the garage that was on my property was about six inches from the property line. I think the ordinance accommodates that, it says that there's an existing structure there, we can, they can convert it.
Yes.
So you can make a lot in southwest work with a detached garage.
No, those garages are preempted by the state. We cannot do anything about a garage.
Well, if they want to convert it to an ADU, they're allowed to encroach into what is now considered a normal setback.
We have one.
So we have to do that. So I think that's accommodate, we've accommodated that in that area by this ordinance.
Yes.
Well, the primary residence only, is only asked to setback by 10 percent of the lot width, which you have four, it could be four, sometimes five, and then the ADU is asked to setback by 10. It really, it's, in my viewpoint, is overly restrictive, and is in contrary to the intent of the state legislature.
Well, you have to remember also that the state's trying to make this statewide. Not very many cities have 40-foot wide or less lots. They're a lot wider. This is a very unique condition, and I'm ready to hear a motion if we have one.
I certainly understand your, your objection, Commissioner Wu, but I think I will make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number PC 18036, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending that the City Council adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California for a City-initiated Amendment ZA 18243 of the City of San Clemente Municipal Code Title 17 for Accessory Dwelling Units."
Second, we have a motion by Tally, second by Ruin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The one, one opposed. And then we also need to make a recommendation on the CEQA findings.
It's in the recitals.
She has it under two items under actions here, under recommendations.
Yeah, that's a little, that's something like new tonight that you have with both of them. Is it, it's in the recitals, do we actually need to pass a separate motion for the CEQA?
I think so.
Okay, you've got a list of the two actions.
We do, we need to put them in there as a resolution.
Okay, very good.
On target, we made a three.
There's, there's no need to make a separate finding, it's part of the resolution.
You're not making the CEQA termination anymore.
Thank you very much. The, do we have any new business? No. Any old business? I see none. Reports from Commissioners and staff?
I'm going to move for adjournment. The next, I move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission to be held on January 16, 2019, at 6:00 PM in City Council chambers located 100 Avenue Presto, San Clemente, California. As the January 2nd, 2019 study session and Planning Commission meetings have been canceled, as well as January 16, 2019 study session.
Second. Motion by Ruin, second by Tally. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Seven, zero.
Eleven o'clock.